May please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by the Honorable Councilwoman Carrie Bzinski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We do have a special recognition and tribute today. And I'm going to hand that over to Councilwoman Sheil. Take it from here.
Thank you very much. This evening, we're recognizing Embassy Title for their 20 years in business. They had started, Kate McCarty is the owner of the company, and she started their business in 2005. And a person has stated that when meeting Kate, there's no doubt that Kate is the heart and soul of the business. She lives by the company motto, which is, "Our customers are our foundation." So it is our honor to honor her this evening. And this presentation, this certificate is presented to Embassy Title Agency Incorporated for their 20th anniversary. On behalf of the city of Livonia, Michigan, we are proud to recognize and celebrate over 20 years of service and presence in our community. We extend our heartfelt congratulations on this remarkable milestone and wish you many more years of continued success, service, and friendship in Livonia. Kate, would you like to join us up here at the podium if you'd like to say a few words?
Well, I just want to say a couple. I feel like little orphan Annie. Do you remember when she went into Daddy Warbucks' house and she went, "I think I'm going to like it here"? Well, I was a single mom, and I came from ground zero, and I took risks. And I just can't believe, I could cry a little bit, that I'm here, 20 years. And I took my mess, and I turned it into a message, and I helped support the city as well. I gave back what I didn't have. So I thank everybody here for recognizing me.
Well, thank you so much.
Awesome. All right. Oh, yeah. We'll say, we'll say our remarks now and then. We got to get a glamour shot. You're coming up here. We're getting a picture. Councilman Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. I appreciate it. Good evening. Kate and your team at Embassy Title, you all do amazing work. And Livonia is very fortunate to have so many small business owners. And this job, this position we're in as city council members, you get to meet a lot of folks you wouldn't always meet, otherwise meet. And I got to meet you through council and all the things you do in the Livonia Community Foundation. And your team is always so involved in various community activities. So it's a fun job. And talking to Councilwoman Toy with her small business, and there are so many small business owners in Livonia, and every one of them, most of them, give back in some way. And your team has consistently given back to Livonia. And every time I see you, you know, sometimes we're all going through stuff in life, and I don't know how, but you're always the most positive, smiling person I ever see. And I always appreciate that, as I try to be more positive in my life and embrace positivity. And every time I see you, you're just so happy. And you always give me a kiss on the cheek, which is always funny to me. And I don't tell my girlfriend, though, but I just...
Fiance.
Excuse me, fiance. So just appreciate you and the positivity. You're always just giving out and the good energy and the good vibes to this community. And thanks for helping everyone you do. And this is well worth it. And I wish you 20 more years. So, thank you. Thanks, Mr. President.
Councilman Toy.
Well, love baby love, I think is your motto. Is that correct?
Yes.
I live right down the street from you, so we're neighbors in essence. I got to tell you, Kate, you have done a ton for this community. My favorite one, of course, is Toys for Tots. I really appreciate that, that you do. And you throw a heck of a party when you had them at Embassy Suites and things. People love you, Kate, very, very much. And I don't want to speak for all of us, but I think we do, too. Thank you again and again.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. I will say, listen, I've been on council for six years, and every interaction that I've had with you has been nothing but incredible. You're the life of the room. You do great things for the community. I know Laura touched base on all the great things you do. But you've always treated me with kindness, like we've known each other forever. And I really appreciate that more than you know. You've been a great person. And, you know, obviously, everybody in this room, if you don't know who she is, now you do, we are so happy and fortunate to have you in Livonia. And again, many more. Let's do this in 20 more years. Laura Toy will still be here, probably. But, no, we love you. And we're gonna, I mean, if anybody has anything, if not, you guys are coming up here. We're getting a glamour shot. And we're gonna, we're gonna do that right now. Councilwoman, do you have something?
No, I just want to say thank you, Kate, for everything you do for the city. Appreciate it.
Oh, well, come on there.
Going up there.
You guys come on. You guys want to come on? Ten more.
All right.
All right. Thank you, everybody. So with that, welcome to the 2028th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved that the next regular meeting, scheduled to be held on Monday, November 17, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Bzinski?
Here.
Councilmember Sheil?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Donovan?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here. We do, we are missing our vice president. Listen, it's, she's a teacher. There's teacher conferences today, I can, safe to say, because my wife's there, too, so we might be seeing her later. We may not. So, just given that. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of the city council that was held on October 20, 2025. Counsel? So moved.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a couple corrections I'd like to make to the minutes.
The floor is yours.
Okay. So on page, on the minutes 43275, it states that, and this is prior to the Sheet's discussion, it states that President McCullough passed the gavel at approximately 8:09 PM, but it doesn't state who he passed it to. So I'd like it stated that it was passed to Councilman Donovan because Vice President was not here and Laura Toy was part of the motion. So it went to Mr. Donovan. And then the next one is in that same, it's on 43278, I believe. And it was the motion that said on a, on a motion made by Councilwoman Morgan, supported by Councilmember Sheil, it was the approving motion that was put forward. And in that approving motion, the drive-through window was removed. So in that paragraph, after restaurant says comma, just put, you could probably just put the word "not including a drive-through window", so that we, you know, that, that the drive-through window was not included in the approving motion at that time.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'll amend my approving to reflect those changes.
Cool. Who is a support?
Support.
You good with that? Perfect. Any other comments, questions from council? Anything from the audience on the minutes? Good evening. Name and address, and you have two minutes.
Greg Rolco from Gulf Ridge Villa. My question is, you take a videotape of the, of the meeting. Is the videotape of the meeting where you used to transcribe and create minutes from those transcriptions, is that also going to be part of the permanent record and part of the approved minutes this evening?
With that, I'm going to go to the, our city attorney. If he can answer it, great.
So the recorded meeting is part of the record of council, and I believe that the minutes are generally transcribed from the recorded meeting. Am I correct about that?
Yes.
But the official minutes of council are the minutes as recorded and collected by the clerk's office. So any corrections made now will be added to that official record.
Okay.
That doesn't really answer the question, because the minutes, they used to transcribe them, okay? And for whatever reason, lately, they've stopped transcribing them. So they're not capturing the gist of the meeting. And so the question that I have is that will the video supplement or be a supplement to the approved minutes? Because to me, that is a public record, and it is an official documentation of what transpired that evening, and any other evening, for that matter.
Through the chair?
Yes.
The video recordings of the meetings are preserved, and they are kept as public records. However, the minutes of the meeting are the journal kept by the city clerk's office and approved by this body. So the official minutes of the meeting do not contain any video footage. They are only the records as transcribed by the clerk's office and approved by this body.
And so I guess my question would be, just to confirm is, but the video, in the event that's needed, could serve as a supplement to validate?
Right. I mean, we keep the video. The video is a public record that anyone can access to validate what happened at these meetings. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So if there is a discretion to...
I can give you 37...
If there is a discretion, or discrepancy, I should say, between what's recorded in the minutes and what you're approving this evening and what the video shows, then obviously, the video would take precedent, because that is the official, you know, video doesn't lie. Let's put it that way. Maybe that's a bad, bad comment, but... So if there's a discrepancy, what trumps the other?
Through the chair again. In terms of what the official record of this body is, the minutes as written and recorded by the clerk's office and approved by this body are the minutes of the body. So the video is evidence of what transpired at the meeting, but the minutes reflect the actions taken by the body and is certified by this body. The video can be descriptive. It can provide background, all those things. But the minutes can be amended, as they have been here and in the future, to reflect changes made by this body. So while the video is evidence of what transpires here, the minutes are a separate entity, and they are meant to reflect the actual actions taken by the body.
I hear what you're saying, but if you have a 15-minute conversation that's reduced to two, two lines in a paragraph, I don't think the latter justifies or does justice to the discussion. And so if there is a discrepancy, can the video, and should the video, I would, I would say yes, trump the discussion or to settle a discrepancy between both.
I will let, if you want to answer that, then that would probably sustain the two minutes.
Sure. So through the chair, the minutes are meant to reflect the actual actions of the body. They're not meant to be entirely descriptive of every word that's said or every conversation that's had, you know, public comment or otherwise. And so the minutes are meant to transcribe what the body has decided, how the body has voted, et cetera. And that's why they're offered in sort of a summary format. They're not, they're not meant to be a word-for-word...
It's kind of the playbook on what was, what was determined. But the video itself, if ever brought up, needed to contradict something, the video would be a supplemental view. So should the minutes need to be updated?
So if, if someone were to say that the minutes are wrong, and we can, and we can refer back to the video, the minutes could then be corrected by this body, similar to how Councilmember Sheil has offered a correction tonight. But the minutes are really only meant to reflect the actual actions of the body.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you.
Yeah. I just, for the life of me, I don't understand why we're not transcribing when we used to. Seems like we periodically do this and that. And you got to be consistent, because I know at other meetings, they also do a transcription, full transcription, which is the only fair thing to do. You have the technology, you have the tools, you have the recording. You ought to do that to properly reflect. And don't put it on the clerk to try to decipher what was said and put in a paragraph, with no disrespect to Lori, but that's, that's the point that I want to make.
And with that, yes. No, no, you're good. I appreciate it. I know we did interrupt some of the things, so that's why. Good evening. Name and address. You have two minutes, and we will not interrupt you.
Patty Rigio, Livonia, Michigan. I thought it's a, in any of the discussions with Sheets, at one point, there was a discussion about the outdoor speakers.
And this has to be on the minutes.
This is on the minutes. And in the minutes, it states that the sound, I'm looking at page 43279. It's actually in several pages of the minutes. But it talks, number, item number 12, it talks about the sound levels of any of the outdoor speakers shall be kept to a reasonable minimum as, so as to not become objectionable. I thought at one point, Sheet said that they would, they would cut out all extra music at, at this site. So I don't see that being reflected in here at all.
Okay. I'm noting that down. I appreciate that. If you have anything else?
That'll be it for now.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Ellen Dorman, 17211, Mayfield, Livonia. I'm sure you're all aware of who I am.
Is this, is this about, this is about Sheets, right? Or the minutes?
It's about the minutes.
Is this about the minutes, ma'am? We're not in audience communication yet.
So I'm not to speak now?
Nope. Unless you want to talk on the minutes from the last meeting. I don't, I don't think...
No. Okay. So I can't do anything right now?
We'll open it up to general communication.
Okay. That's okay.
Yep. All right. With that, I am going to ask our clerk to take the, oh, yes. Counsel.
I would agree with the correction recommendation brought forward during communication there. If there is no objection to amending the minutes to reflect the sound, I do feel like that reflected the conversation that we had. Obviously, it was a long night, so I welcome feedback, but...
Mr. President, I would just note that, again, to the city attorney's point, it's a summary and doesn't always include every exact word that was said at that meeting. However, that motion failed anyway, so I'd be okay with adding that additional, if you want to summarize exactly. What did you want to add, I guess?
Well, I think the mention was that it was to keep noise at a reasonable level. I believe that the conversation was that the speakers would be used for emergency communication and not ambient noise.
So would you like that?
That, again, is what my memory is, but it was a long evening. So if others feel that that was not what it said, that's fine. So...
Just to be, if I may, just to kind of keep rolling on this is, just as Carter said, if there is something that we did review that needed to go back in, it could always be brought up to update the minutes. Doing speculative, if you would like to, I just think it kind of goes down a...
I don't disagree. I just, since we had made some other edits, I just thought...
If, I mean, I'm okay, it's the council's doing and wishes.
I'm okay with amending my original motion. I just, if you could stipulate what exactly you wanted to say so that they can reflect it appropriately.
Again, I, my understanding was that there would be no ambient noise.
Outdoor music, maybe?
Yes, exactly. Outdoor music.
Is what the approving resolution that was offered, said that there would be no outdoor music being played, but only speakers for emergency purposes?
Exactly. And again, I'm only bringing it up because we were making other edits to this specific item, so for a matter of consistency.
I think our city attorney's looking to...
So just, yeah, just as a further clarifying point on this, is the request that this be reflected in the approving motion that failed? That the approving...
I, I, my feeling, I think what the resident was pointing out was that was what was in the approving motion, and that it be reflected in the minutes as such.
Okay.
Again.
The maker of the motion is okay. Is the supporter fine with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, Mr. President.
Councilman Morgan, are you okay with as a supporter?
Yeah, honestly, I don't, I don't remember that portion of it. I remember briefly talking about it, but I don't see that, foresee that being an issue.
Okay. Is that fine?
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote on the minutes?
Councilmember Bzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the minutes carry. Oh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Look at that.
Councilmember Sheil.
Did you just have a, you were busy.
I'm a little foggy from lack of sleep. Yes, sorry about that.
Well, the minutes carry, six to zero. With that, I'm going to jump right into audience communication. For items that are not on the current agenda, the council will set aside 30 minutes. And name and address, make your way to each podium, and you have three minutes. Yep? Really, you're good.
I compliment you all for the work you do, even though I don't always agree, but that's okay.
Appreciate that.
Do you want me to say my name again? I forgot.
Yes, just, just for the record, if you don't mind. Yes.
Ellen Dorman, 17211, Mayfield Street, Livonia, 48152. And I have been in Livonia since 1942. So Livonia, I know well. Both my parents worked. My dad was, in my day, a policeman. Now they call him cops. But anyway. In the last five years, as well as several neighbors, I have been to and spoke to all council members, as well as presented a letter to what I was speaking on. All listened, but here it is, five years later. Nothing like a kid, nothing. It started with one, and I came to council. It wasn't just me. As a matter of fact, it was neighbors. I now have four of the homes that house seniors that can have up to six within 5,000 feet of my home, not at one end of the street or the other end. And there's another one that's ready to go. Nothing has been done. I gave you a letter to the state, because I wrote to the state, and the state put it right back here, okay? And you all had copies of it. And we are zoned, rural, residential. And that is not a new zoning. That has been that way ever since here, okay? And it's a business. And there's caregiver traffic. There's emergency traffic. You all know. And they're getting the benefit of all of us that own homes residentially. And they are a business and get $6,000 to $8,000 per head, per month. And I'm sorry, we are zoned rural, two, one, excuse me, not two. What's happening? Why can't you do something? That's what our city's zoned. It's nothing that has to be changed. And I now have four. What do I do? I'm asking all of you. I have been here for five years, and you all know. And the state put it back in your lap.
That's time. Thank you. Good evening, sir. Name and address, three minutes.
John Grisbick, 11311 Hubble. Thank you, President McCullough, members of council. Out of concern for being over three minutes, I'm going to split my thoughts between here and the study meeting, so you have to put up with me twice. Personally, I wanted to offer my condolences to the former Vice President of the United States, Dick Cheney. No matter what you thought of him, he was our Vice President, led through 9/11 and those kinds of things. Second of all, personal thought, Bob Nash. Bob Nash, obviously, the late husband. Sue Nash, our clerk, former clerk and now treasurer. Bob was a friend. Bob loved up north. He loved God. He loved his church. He loved the court. He worked there as a court officer for a long time. We had a lot of good conversations about up north. I love up north, too, and different things. He loved a good yard sign. He respected people that he liked, you know, that he supported and otherwise. So rest in peace, Bob. I will definitely miss you. Thank you, Mr. President, members of council.
Thank you, John. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Kaylee Kavanaugh-Reed. Obviously, I live at 35922 Ladywood Street. And I just wanted to take the time tonight to thank our clerk in the clerk's office, everyone that worked on the election yesterday, over the weekend, processing the absentee ballots. And I want to thank all of the candidates that ran, and especially my friends and family that helped me out. And I would like to thank all of the voters for trusting me with being your next council president. I'm very nervous. I'm very shocked, but I am ready to get to work. And I just wanted to say thank you to everyone.
Thank you. There we go. Congratulations. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Steve King, Coventry Gardens. Last night, long, long day, long night. On the campaign trail, I went to bed before the results came back. So I wrote a couple speeches, and then I found out the results. Unfortunately, I have to give this speech. Running for local office is incredibly challenging. At the state and national levels, candidates raise a boatload of money and hire professionals to handle everything. But in local elections, it's different. It's you, your friends, your neighbors, and your family doing the work. They pour in countless hours, energy, and heart, all in the hopes of making a difference. To everyone who stood by me, who donated, who helped me on the campaign trail. I had a tremendous team. Thank you. We ran an honest campaign in a dishonest environment. And the results speak more about Livonia's political machine than about the will of the people. From the beginning, it was clear that the establishment couldn't stand the thought of someone like me challenging their comfortable little circle. What we saw was not a fair election. It was a character assassination. Lies, rumors, and cowardly whisper campaigns took center stage. Even city departments, the legal office, and the police were once again weaponized to keep me off council, just as they were a decade ago. They used the exact same playbook, even the same pictures, 10 years ago. The same playbook, and the results were exactly the same. It's corruption hiding behind smiling faces and fake civility. I came into this race expecting to actually get a seat. Instead, I finished last, not because I lacked support, but because I refused to play dirty or bow to the insiders who've been running this city for themselves, not for the residents. To Kaylee, Eileen, Patrick, congratulations. You earned a tough job. I hope you use it to challenge the system, not become part of it. I may not have won a seat, but I haven't lost my voice. I will keep calling out hypocrisy and holding power accountable. Livonia likes to say families first. Maybe someday, that will finally be true. In closing, if anybody has one of my signs, drop it off at the house. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. King. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Pat Brockway, Livonia, Michigan. Just wanted to say thank you to the clerk's office for running this election, and thank you to the voters of Livonia for putting their trust and confidence in me. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, for those watching, just if you go to my website, BrockwayforLivonia.com, I still have two links, one for Wounded Warriors Project. I still have a campaign running for that. I'm going to keep it open and running for 24 hours now. So if you have a chance to check it out, if you wanted to make a donation to Wounded Warriors Project, it goes to help, help our veterans out. Also, there's a link to ALS of Michigan. It's a terrible disease that takes everything. So anything that you'd want to donate to that to, to, you know, find or to help those in need that are fighting this illness. So for the next 24 hours, I'll have both of those links live. And again, thank you to Livonia.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Eileen McDonald, Livonia, Michigan, of course. I wanted to congratulate Lori and her staff for all their hard work running in the election, through the process. It's a lot of work. I talked to her staff a few times last week, and they were, I was told that they had to come in, like, on Saturday morning at 5:30, and they were going to be there late. And then I'm sure last night was early, early morning, and then... And then I'm sure last night was early, early morning, and then very, very late into the evening, so I understand if they're very tired, and maybe they should get an extra vacation day for that. But anyway, I want to congratulate everybody who participated and took the time to run for office through the primary. We had all these wonderful people that felt their call to really try to make a difference for the city. And I think we had a wonderful group of individuals. I personally was able to make a whole lot of new friends, and I look forward to serving this community. But I think the voters kind of sent the message that they really wanted to see a little bit of change, a little bit of direction, in my opinion. And I'm looking forward to being able to work with my colleagues to... or upcoming colleagues, anyway, to ensure that we take the time to really listen to what the community is saying, because I feel it's just so, so important. And congratulations, Kaylee, on being the president. Glad it's you, not me. It's a lot of work. But anyway, thank you, everyone, and congratulations to everybody. It was a well-felt election, and I'm really proud of everyone, even the people that didn't necessarily make it. They worked equally as hard as everyone else to try to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Greg Ralco, Gulfridge Villa. On behalf of our residents, I just wanted to thank you again for denying the approval of the site plan at your October 20th meeting. Remember, you already told Sheets no by a 5 to 2 margin back in January. Thank you for standing firm on your 5 to 2 vote. Thank you also for upholding two critical ordinances, not allowing a new gas station to be built within 100 feet of a park, actually two parks, Whispering Willows and Greenmead, and not allowing a restaurant drive-through operation to open in a C1 zone, which is prohibited by ordinance. Thank you for not turning your backs on the Vision 21 master plan for this corner, for this corner is eventually to be parked again. Thank you for honoring the Greenmead master plan by not supporting something that does not comply with Greenmead's green strategy. Thank you for not turning this quiet bedroom park area into a high-intensity mega-service gas station, something you'll find only on a major freeway. Thank you for not letting this corner of the city be drastically and detrimentally changed at the cost of future generations. Thank you for realizing that a 24/7 operation will introduce crime into this residential and park area of the city where presently doesn't exist. It's dead after 9:00 PM. Thank you for acknowledging the significant environmental risks of this development and for respecting the concerns of the Friends of the Rouge and the staff at Greenmead. When you install an 18-foot retaining wall, or cliff, as it should be called, next to a critical watershed, you are asking for big trouble. Thank you for not ignoring the legal misdeeds of the Zoning Board of Appeals and not covering for them and being an accomplice to their misdeeds. The ZBA was reckless in their process, and everyone knows it. They need to be reeled in by you ASAP. On traffic, Sheets says that 44,000 cars go through this intersection every day, and they will capture 10% of them. Now imagine 4,400 cars pulling in and then trying to make a left turn out of that corner. Thank you for understanding the traffic concerns of the residents and not allowing this pending disaster to be downplayed. Everything's not going to be okay. Thank you for understanding that the Livonia population is down 17% from its peak, and the city has been at its gas station saturation point for years. Thank you for listening to the 95% of the 400 homes nearest to this corner when they told you that there is no need or demand for another gas station. In the meantime, thank you for recently approving Costco on Hagerty to double their pump count to 30 pumps.
That's time.
And it's only a mile away.
Mr. Ralco, that's time. Thank you. Good evening. Name and address.
Hi, Deb Christensen, Livonia. Two things. I'm up here for the second item, but I wanted to comment, if I could, President, the woman that came up and talked about what I presume are group homes or adult foster care homes in the city. And I know I've spoke about this before. My mom was in such a home when she was at the end of her life, and it was a real... as much it was a bad experience in terms of her passing, but it was a good experience for our family because she was able to afford a facility like that versus a nursing home or even home or in-home care. And so if we don't allow those kinds of facilities or businesses to be here, and they're residences, is what they are. People live there. People live there. I get the whole thing about their businesses, but people live at these places, so where are these people supposed to go? I also have a sister-in-law who's been in a brownstone. She's severely cognitively impaired. She's been there since deinstitutionalization happened. She's been there for... I've been with my husband for over 30 years. She's been in the same group home for approximately 40 years with some of the same staff, which is really remarkable. But it's her home. It's her home, and it's in a residential area. Where is she supposed to live? Okay. My next item is, I am still waiting for an apology to the public, to the person that was offended. We were all offended, and if I were up here saying some, you know, degrading language toward any one of you, I'm sure that you would want the same thing and the same courtesy. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, council, President, Clerk. First, I want to say congratulations to...
Just really just name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Joe Schaefer. I live at 29552 Linda Street. I've been a resident of Livonia for seven years. First, I want to say congratulations to everyone who ran for office. I ran for office in Westland when I lived there about 10 years ago, and I know it's very... It's very cumbersome. It's hard to do whether or not you win or lose, so congratulations for even having the courage to run. It's something that many people do. Next, I want to talk about why I really came up here, so... And that's about something we all know that's ongoing, the callousness of our federal government. I don't care what side of the aisle we stand on, the idea that we should allow people that are in poverty to go without food, those worse off among us. It's kind of a reflection of our morality as a nation, that we would allow people that maybe have impairment or are down on their luck to suffer in any way, especially children. And in Livonia, we have a residence, at least according to the 2020 census, of about 95,500 people. And I know you guys have posted on the website various places people can go to get food assistance, and you do have something, I think it's on the third Thursday of every month, where people can go to get food, but I think this is insufficient. So people that are on welfare assistance, they receive, you know, a card to their home, at least I think they do. I don't get the assistance myself, but I think they receive something to their home that they can then take to a place near them that they can use as a debit card to buy food. A lot of these people don't have vehicles. They rely on public transportation. They may walk. So additionally, with a population of 95,500 people, if I believe census data to say that about 6% of our population has an income of 130% of the poverty level or lower, that means about 5,750 people receive SNAP in our community. And of that, about 1,000 children are in those households. So I really beg of you to do more. So what we should be doing, at least in my opinion, is delivering food to these people, not requiring them to go to places that are not by their homes, that they might not be able to get to, especially those with kids. So please do whatever you can personally, but also as a community, to do something to help these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Genevieve Lenore, 9063 Beatrice Street. I just want to tell you all about an exciting, to me, local history find I recently made. Recently, I ran into an article from the Detroit Free Press from March 24, 1906, titled, "Forget His Tombstone. Remembering Others, J. P. Briggs Neglected Himself," it reads in part. "The will filed for probate Friday orders that $150 be expended on a stone on the grave of Mr. Briggs' wife buried at the Mount Olivet Cemetery in Detroit, and also for the erection of a $100 memorial at the graves of his father, mother, and sister, who are buried in Union Cemetery in Livonia Township." Some may not know, but a few years ago, the city confirmed 18 unidentified pioneer graves in Union Cemetery with ground-penetrating radar. This unexpected newspaper article achieved what had seemed impossible at that time, to give our precious pioneers their names back, because the memorial mentioned was never set, and the graves have never been before recorded in Union Cemetery. J. P. Briggs was the namesake son of John Pardon Briggs, who arrived in the township with his wife Louisa in 1830, seven years before Michigan became state. His father, Pardon Briggs, originally owned the land that makes up the eastern side of the old cemetery, and his older brother Dexter arrived in 1825, before the township was even formed, and left his mark, holding many vital leadership positions here from 1837 to 1867, when it was little more than a wilderness. In 1850, Dexter and four other men incorporated the Union Society of Livonia, whose meeting house is now the theater. A sketch was written at the time of John Pardon Senior's death that says of him, "He was the father of nine children, seven sons, and two daughters, of whom four sons still survive him. He was a noble, upright man, always ready to assist those in want, and one that cast his influence on the side of right." Consequently, he was a staunch abolitionist at a time when it was very unpopular to cast a vote for that noble principle. He was a lifelong temperance man, always using his influence against the nefarious traffic of alcoholic drinks. He was a charter member of the Livonia Reform Club and an active member until the time of his death. He was very kind and considerate to his family relations and with his friends. His memories will be cherished by all those who knew him. It's time we truly appreciate that the Union Meeting House and Cemetery are not just Livonia history for us to forget about. They are valuable state pioneer history and invaluable national abolitionist history. We need to recognize the heroes buried in the cemetery with pride and use their stories and our historic sites to our own cultural and economic advantage. Anything less is a lost opportunity that future Livonians will not be better for.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a crazy story. All right. Seeing nobody else for audience communication, I'm going to go back to the council. For business-related items, we do have new data on Item 6 and 7, and we do have a rezoned public hearing that's going to take place here on November 19. I'll hand it over to Councilman Scott Morgan for an update on our retirees.
Yep, I just want to congratulate a couple of our retirees. Hope I get this name right. I don't know this person, but it's William Kachera, Public Service Worker 1, 25 years, 6 months, actually. I do know this person, I'm sorry. I take that back. I just want to congratulate William on that, on their 25 years of service, and I wish them good godspeed in retirement. Also, Andrew Hess, who is a senior police officer, City of Livonia, 25 years, 10 months, and I do know him. He's been around for quite some time while I was there. Excellent man and family man, and he's done a great job, and just like to wish him godspeed in his retirement also. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Councilwoman Toy, and then I'll open it up.
Thank you very much. Just as has been stated before by Mr. Grisham, Bob Nash, Robert Nash, who worked in the courts for many years. Father was a former clerk, city council member, as well as a teacher, and his mom, Laura, resided in Livonia for practically Bob's whole life. He is and was a very personal friend of mine and married to our city treasurer, and his children, Lindsay and Logan, and his dog, you'll never believe this name, right? Bentley, because Bob is an old bulldog from Bentley High School. I just want to recognize Bob tonight, and hopefully we can recognize him more in the future, but when you talk about a wonderful guy that had some really good instincts on people and on politics, he's one that we're going to miss a lot. Most of us, you know, we're part of Bob's life, and we really, we bless him day in and day out, so please keep his family and the thoughts of them in your prayers, please. Also, I want to recognize, this is what happens when you're in the city for way too long, Mary Ann Naboycheck. Mary Ann, do any of you know who Mary Ann was? I think Linda would, right? No? Mary Ann Naboycheck was Director of Senior Citizen Services here in Livonia. She did an outstanding job, day in and day out. We weren't able to get the exact numbers of her employment here, but she had passed of battling cancer as well, and she died peacefully here in Livonia at age 91. She has a... She had a degree from Madonna University, a bachelor's, that is, and her role as the senior Sheldon Senior Center in Livonia, she provided a lot of guidance and big ears to listen to a lot of our seniors that are past and present. I think Carl still works there and would remember Mary Ann. He came in after Mary Ann. She had great faith. She was a very warm and kind person. She survived by somebody I went to kindergarten with, Kathy Naboycheck, who was her daughter. We went to Lincoln Elementary together behind the turkey farm there. And Mary Ann got the job in the City of Livonia, had four children, she has grandchildren, she even has great-grandchildren. Mary Ann's going to be really missed. I know she still went over to our senior center and led some guidance, and she was a member of St. Edens Church. Her legacy of love and compassion to our community will be deeply missed. She inspired many. Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues.
Thank you. Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it, sir. Bob Nash, rest in peace. He's a great man. If you know Livonia city politics, you know Bob. I think about, I don't know, eight, nine years ago, Bob was telling me, get involved in politics, and he said, you have to start with lawn signs. And I think it was at Councilwoman Toy's house, putting together lawn signs and taking lawn signs out of her back shed and trying to dodge spider webs and all sorts of things like that, and that was Bob's way of saying, you got to get involved in your community. And he loved talking about local politics. He was a former council member and now Judge Jim Jolly's court officer way back when. I may or may not have to go before Mr. Nash with a traffic ticket or two as a kid. Bob treasured respect, but also was stern like a big brother, and he just was always so involved in the community, and of course, married to our city treasurer, Susie Nash. He just was always very involved, and I know as council members, he always talked to us, and he was a good man, so just thinking about him. I also wanted to say congrats to our clerk and your entire team and all the volunteers and all the clerk staff and election staff. Those are long days, and your team did a really good job, so hats off to your team and all those Livonia residents. Without the Livonia residents that volunteer and election workers, we couldn't run our elections and conduct our business, so great job to them. To the candidates that ran, it's not easy running for office. It's the most unique job I've ever had, and I think we can all attest that as council members. You get to work with seven people, you fight like brothers and sisters, and we all have a good time after. So it's a lot of fun. So to the candidates that ran, thank you for stepping up and running for elected office. It's a big, big task, not only on you. It takes a year of your life campaigning, and you don't get paid to campaign, and you often volunteer for all sorts of things in the community, and you give up time with your family and your spouses and your children, and it's a lot on you, but also your family as a young dad. I remember when you first ran years ago, and your daughter was so young, and now she's almost as old as you, and a lot of time goes on, so it's just, it's a very unique job. So anyone that steps up to run in the City of Livonia, I appreciate you, and whether you agree or disagree on things, for you to run and win, I can appreciate that work ethic and dedication to the community. So to our council president-elect, she's in the audience this evening, Kaylee Reed Kavanaugh, congratulations on running a really hard-fought race. And to your vice president, Patrick Brockway-elect, president-elect, vice president-elect, congratulations to you, and then also... And then also to Councilwoman-elect Eileen McDowell, congrats to you, you've been around. And then to Councilwoman-elect Robin Persicconi, so great job to all of you that won, and have fun. It's, it's an interesting job. And then also, I don't know if we did it last meeting, but happy birthday to Council Buzinski.
That's right.
Did we do it last time? Was her birthday last time? So congratulations. I don't know if we, we talked about it since, so congrats. And then, two more things I wanted to touch on was the group homes. I know we've, we've heard that a lot, and I know we've kind of talked about this a lot to our city attorney. You know, long story short, to the residents that, you know, maybe not familiar with this, the City of Livonia, on advice of our council, doesn't necessarily have the authority to say no group homes, or adult foster care homes in neighborhoods. That is governed and policed by the state of Michigan, and it's a lawful, it's a lawful type of residential usage. While I may disagree that group homes can be in neighborhoods, you know, that, that's allowed through the state, and correct me if I'm wrong to our city attorney. And I had the pleasure of visiting Silver Village this weekend. Great job to the Housing Department, they're updating some of the bathrooms to barrier-free restrooms, and they're renovating some of the vacant units, and they've, they've renovated some of the occupied units to barrier-free restrooms with new tile and showerless curbs and whatnot, so it was very eye-opening to see that. And I was wondering, through the chair, to our city attorney, I know I had asked you last, last council meeting, about some items that, that took place at the Housing Department, some, some statements that were made, so I was wondering maybe if you had time to clarify some of those and give us an update there.
Sure. So there were two sort of main questions raised about concerns over at the villages. One, people receiving eviction letters and eviction notices for speaking out at housing commission meetings, and, and a second, similarly related, that the community rooms were being locked as punishment for residents speaking out at the meetings. We've, we've had a lot of internal meetings on this, we've discussed this at great length, and we just wanted to clarify some things. The community rooms were locked, but not as a punishment to residents. There was a sign on the door instructing residents who to call, to have them unlocked for community events, but we received some concerns from residents, actually, and employees about members of the public who are not residents of our, of any of our housing accessing those rooms with some frequency, and the directive of emergency preparedness actually advised us that we should lock those rooms in the meantime while they were not in use by residents. So the Housing Commission has had meetings and discussions on putting in place a FOB system, an electronic FOB system, for residents so that they can enter at will, but so that other folks from the public cannot access those, those rooms without supervision. And then, as far as eviction notices, my office actually typically handles evictions there. We have not had an eviction within the last several months, at least not one that has gone to court, and, and most eviction proceedings do have to go to court. Any letters received or notices are about individual lease violations, for instance, damaging housing commission property might, might elicit such a letter, but there have been no letters that have gone out to people simply for speaking about their issues.
Great, Mr. President, thank you. Thanks to our city attorney, and I wanted to bring that up, because, you know, hearing that this Housing Department was evicting residents for speaking up about concerns was naturally alarming, and I wanted to get down to the bottom of that. We should not, that's illegal, one, but we should not be threatening residents, and it sounds like we were not doing that. And then, to your point about the, the, those, those rooms, those activity rooms, that makes sense. I can't walk into a housing community right now, into their activity rooms, and, and their fitness rooms without some sort of access. And I think in today's world, with security measures to protect our seniors at Silver Village, they're paying to be there, they should have the privacy amongst themselves and neighbors to, to go there without just anyone randomly walking in there. So I'm, I'm happy to see that we're taking that seriously and adding some sort of controlled access to those activity rooms for our seniors. So thanks, Mr. President, appreciate it, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Buzinski.
Yes, thank you so much. A lot to say, really a lot to reiterate that has been said, but I do think it's worth mentioning again, Bob Nash was a wonderful person and, and strong resident, very engaged in our community, and I just give my greatest love and sympathy to our treasurer, Susie Nash, and Lindsay and Logan. You know, those kind of losses are really hard, and, you know, I know that we all give them our love and strength as they, you know, handle this hardship. So just sending them my love. And to the election, thank you, Lori and her team for running another strong election here in Livonia. It's not easy, you know, elections have changed a lot in recent years with early voting, and, you know, more absentee ballots going out, so larger numbers on, you know, local elections like these. So thank you for the work that you do, and your staff, and all of the volunteers who are out doing that work. To all the candidates, you know, we had 19 candidates running our first primary in two cycles. I think that shows the increased engagement here in our community, and, you know, so many of those candidates that ran in the 19 remain actively engaged in our community now, and I think that's wonderful. I hope that continues, you know, with the, the folks who didn't quite make the finish line yesterday. I'm sure it will, knowing them as I, I have gotten to know them some quite well. And to our new colleagues, I look forward to working with you and the years ahead. It's a, it's a fun time, and, you know, so congratulations. It's not easy, but it is very important work to do. To the note, sorry, there's a couple more things. To the note on the food assistance, the city website, right on the homepage, does have a list of resources available for folks who want to donate, or who are looking to receive assistance. The Emergency Food Assistant Program was noted, but it is the third Tuesday of each month at 11, or at 10, 10 a.m. at the Livonia Housing Commission on Farmington Road, is where folks can just come and get food. I did ask our housing director if there, we'd seen an increased number at, in October for this service, and it was pretty stable. Obviously, we'll see how things progress this month. I will also note that the Livonia Quanis are doing a fundraiser to provide dinners for families, if you would like to support their efforts, or if you're in need, you can also reach out to the Livonia Quanis. Finally, next coffee hour is November 15th, 11 o'clock, at the Civic Center Library. As always, there will be Looney Donuts, we'll talk about what's happened at the city. Schoolcraft College is also going to come as a representative to kind of talk about all the exciting developments that they have going on on their campus, program changes that they have. They have a lot of community ed programs. We also have free community college in Michigan now, and how that's changed what they're doing on campus. So if you're just curious about what's happening at Schoolcraft, come on by and ask questions. So I think that's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sheel.
Thank you. I also wanted to offer my condolences to Susie and her family on the passing of Bob Nash. He was a, he was a great guy, and he will definitely be missed around this community. I also wanted to congratulate those who made council through the election last night, and I want to thank everybody who put their names into run, starting with the primary, and working all the way through till now. So thank you very much, everyone, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, so Bobby, I've known him probably for 30-plus years. When I was a policeman, I used to be over at court a lot, he was a court officer. A great guy, he would do anything he could to help you. He was a good family man, he was a good person, and I just, he's going to be sorely missed, and my condolences go out to his family, and I'm just sorry.
Thank you. All right, so, yeah, there's usually a, listen, Bob, I'm going to continue the trend. I still remember the first time Bob ever sent me an email, and I was first running, and I was brand-new to these politics, and I put a sign probably where I shouldn't have, and that was part of the game, and I got an email from him at 2 a.m., and I responded back, and I went, yeah, me and my team, my team is new, and probably, you know, didn't know, well, that team was Baby Harper, me, and, and Casey driving around the town, and listen, Bob is a guy that, if you've known him for an hour or 30 years, is just a special guy that cares about anybody and everybody. Everybody that knew him is better off, and he's going to be sorely, sorely missed, and condolences to the family, but his spirit will live on, his stories will live on, and that's how we're going to keep him there, and he will be missed, so. With that, on more of a happy birthday, we already announced Carrie, but we forgot to embarrass our council administrator, Sarah Casperitz, who also celebrated a birthday, so we can embarrass her. Happy birthday belated. And then, you know, I, I want to jump to the, to the election. Listen, everybody that's out there, things during elections can be interesting, especially now in the social media age and everything that goes on, but at the end of the day, people that, people that submit to running a campaign, I, I promise you, there's nothing like it, and I don't care who it is, and the names, you know, Kaylee Kavanaugh-Reed, incoming council president, congratulations, Patrick Brockway, Eileen McDonald, Robin Persicconi, Kathleen McIntyre, Jenny O'Connor, James Hooper, and Steve King. I'm naming them all because, listen, it's a grueling test, and it takes a lot, but listen, these were all people that wanted to do things for their community, and, you know, these type of things, you know, obviously it would be great if everybody could get on council, but having people step up, especially in this cycle, was awesome to see. And even people that are here that ran in that primary of the 19, that are, are continuing to do things, it's just going to keep growing. So listen, everybody that put in, anybody that won and lost, congratulations to everybody. And honestly, if anybody you've seen, even if you didn't vote for them, even if you had some interesting things to say about them, you know, if you see them, tell them, you know, thank you for running, because you know what? They were doing it for the community, for the people, honestly. So if you see them, give them some kudos, all right? And with that, I mean, we're already at 8:02, we'll keep it rolling, but I think that's all I have here. I'm going to jump to reports from the mayor and other city officials, and I'm going to hand it over to the mayor, but I did want to say, we did have communication from the Department of Finance dated October 9th, 2025, forwarding the department purchase report. We also had communication, again, from the Department of Finance dated October 17th, forwarding various financial statements. And we also had communication, again, from the Department of Finance dated October 24th. These are all received files, but we want to note them. Mayor, great to see you, and the floor is yours.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I want to join all of you in extending condolences to the Nash family. I think you all did a really fantastic job of honoring Bob Nash tonight with your comments, and additionally, Mr. Grisbeck's comments, I, I think it really encompassed the huge force that Bob Nash has been in elections in Livonia. And it's rather ironic that we didn't have him here for this last election, and I think perhaps, like me, many of you certainly felt his presence yesterday, whether you were driving by errant signs, or you were driving by polling precincts, noting how many people either were or weren't there supporting candidates, but understanding that at the heart of the work that Bob Nash did was a passion for excellence in this community. There was a passion for engagement, there was a passion for bringing young talent along, and people that truly believed in what we all stand for, which is service. And we will miss him a lot. So our condolences to his wife Susie, and the kids, and the extended family. These are not going to be easy days ahead, but I think the support of all of you, the support of this community, the support of the administration, is going to be a big part of how life finds a way to move on, and not move on without Bob Nash, but move on with long memories, long learnings, and a long history. So I want to just thank you all for your kind and, and warm comments on that front. Secondarily, to the clerk's office again, thank you for all the work that you put in last night, late into the evening, making sure that our election results were open, honest, fair, transparent, everything accounted, right? All of those things that you want to make sure happens, happen in your office. So thank you very much, the clerk's office. To the candidates that are going to be joining us come January in four of these seats, this is exciting. We all understand that our terms come to an end one day, but the opportunity to work with four clearly very engaged people in our community, I think is going to be a big part of how we find a path forward, and we really work to bring Livonia moving forward in a very progressive way, something that, something we can all be proud of. So I, for one, am looking forward to that. To the candidates who ran and did not win, a number of us have been in those shoes. I have been in those shoes before. It doesn't feel right for a while, but I think the honor comes in having stood up to the challenge. So to all of them, I say congratulations as well. I have a couple items that I want to just bring you up to speed on, because they're relevant to the week ahead, or perhaps even the weeks ahead. I want to talk to you a little bit about how our community is standing strong during the government shutdown, and in particular, how we're responding as an administration to the lack of SNAP benefits for groceries and daily essentials, that, as one of our residents pointed out, does affect a significant number of people in our community. So again, this is a great testimony to a phenomenal group of people on our administrative team that came together very quickly to put an interactive map together on the front page of our website, so that people that are interested not in just donating food, or donating essentials, but who are in need of food and in need of essentials, can find out where those opportunities exist. There are currently 17 locations, either directly in or around the Livonia area. You can click on a map in your neighborhood and find that which is closest to you. But as one of the residents pointed out very accurately, oftentimes, the hindrance to your ability to get to those resources resides in transit. So we formed a really strong partnership with CARES located in Farmington Hills. It's an organization, a food organization, that we support heavily in the City of Livonia, and we know where our greatest pocket of need is. So we are standing up a food pantry in those areas, so that people don't have to worry necessarily about getting transportation to food, we're working hard to bring food to them. And wherever we find that there's a need like that, we're going to be really working hard to make sure that transportation is not an impediment. The list of resources will continue to grow as we learn about more, as we reach out to more nonprofits, as many of our churches stand up operations, many of them may not have had food pantries in the past, but they're, they're putting them together now. So we're reaching out through a program that we call Livonia CARES, which many of you may recall, was started back in 2011, and it brought our church community together in the City of Livonia. We communicate with them on a regular basis, and whenever they're engaged in projects like this, we work really hard to use whatever technology we can to bring all of those resources together. Our city website, our Facebook page, is one of the best ways for people to connect with those resources. So for folks that are in need, there are great opportunities. Christ Our Savior Food Pantry, Emmanuel Lutheran's Community Cupboard, like I said, CARES of Farmington Hills are just but a few of the opportunities that we have to either contribute or to help get needed supplies for people that we, that we have in our community. Our Livonia Emergency Food Assistance Program is fully engaged and operating right now. We, again, have this full list of donation and pickup locations that we're doing through that. The project itself is called Livonia Community Cupboard, and it really is a great, big heavy lift by, by the people on the administrative side, and I want to give a special nod to our housing director, our communications director, and our head of IT. They are the force behind this effort, so we're really proud of the work that they've done, and we'll keep you informed as it continues to grow. The other big thing, which I know you're all super excited about, is that we're really close to opening the new Livonia Senior Wellness Center, and I had a chance to stop by today for one of the walkthroughs. There are a number of things that are happening over there. There are senior tours. We want to make sure that even though it's not officially open for business, I think we just got our occupancy certificate today, so some of those tours are going to start with seniors that are currently in our senior center that just want to find their way over there. They can sign up for tours on our livonia.gov website, they can contact the Livonia Senior Center here, that's currently up and operating, not the new one yet, but the one that they're engaged with, and they can schedule times. So we've got times for those walkthrough tours from 10:00 to 11:30, 1:30 to 3:00 p.m., and we're going to be doing that all the way through November the 12th. We're closed November 11th for Veterans Day, so, so that's not an available date, but we do have a couple more dates available. There's a limited number of people, I think it's 50 people per group that can go on these tours, but there are still some slots open if people are interested in those. And then, of course, for anybody who can't make those smaller tours, we really want to be ready for the big reveal on November the 13th. November the 13, or 15th, rather, Saturday, November 15th, from 10:00 to 1:00, is a community open house, and this is going to be a chance for people that may not be seniors yet to to be a chance for people that may not be seniors yet to tour the site, to see what amenities there are in this facility. And then, of course, November the 13th, that's the day of the ribbon cutting. And that's the day that I'm looking forward to seeing you all come together and get a chance to see what you've all done. Because it is one of the most amazing gifts that we're going to be capable of giving our senior population. There are so many aspects of the wellness center that have been taken into account because we've done such a diligent job of listening to residents to what is most important to them. And throughout the facility, you'll see signs posting and pointing you in the direction of where we have very specifically listened to the request of our senior community. So super excited to share all of that with the community and looking forward to an official opening and transfer of activities starting on November 17. That's a Monday. And we're going to be open for business. So really, really excited about all of those opportunities. Also this week, you may have noticed that we welcomed in three new firefighters to our fire and rescue team. And the reason that these happen on a somewhat frequent basis, but what's significant about this is that two of the new firefighters were sponsored through a 2025 Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Emergency Medical Services Workforce Grant. And this allows these students to complete their paramedic training at Dorsey College with full tuition covered and a small monthly stipend to help support their families while they're in school and while we're bringing them onboard as firefighters. The city was awarded $140,000 through this grant. And we've already been approved for 2026 funding as well. So this is especially significant in terms of just overall the need to combat the reduction in the number of paramedics that are available to communities to hire. But for Livonia specifically, this is a big part of our pipeline. This is a big part of how we're finding top-notch talent in the event that we do have vacancies within the fire department. So this is a great way of making sure that we've got qualified EMS professionals. And we had two such professionals sworn in. Our city clerk was there to swear them in earlier, swear them all in earlier this week. These are all, as you know, budgeted positions that keep us at a fully staffed fire department. And a big part of how we're able to move forward with this project is because you all signed off on a great contract that had a provision that allows us to bring firefighters in in this fashion. This is new for us. This is a new opportunity. It's one that's spearheaded by Chief Jensen and his team. And when you get a chance to say, congratulations, job well done, you can say it sincerely. Because we met the talent. The city clerk was there this week. And they really are a fantastic group of people. And we'll continue to see that kind of talent coming through this program. So those are just a couple of the big things going on in the city and wanted to make sure you were aware.
Awesome.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. All right. Well, with that, if anybody's here for the study meeting, obviously, we are behind. So we are still in the regular. And we're going to jump right into the consent agenda. So moving on to the consent agenda, items one through five on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on October 20, 2025, and determined to be non-controversial.
So move.
Support.
We have, and then the support was Councilman Schill. Comments from council? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Schill?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the consent agenda passes six to zero. We're going to move on to unfinished business, starting with item six, is a waiver petition comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2025-07-02-15 submitted by Manic and Smith Group on behalf of Clean Express Car Wash requesting waiver use approval to operate an auto wash establishment at 38886 Mile Road, located on northeast corner of Fox Drive and 6 Mile Road in the southwest section of 7. Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I have our motion to table this until the end of the meeting? And hopefully, Martha will be here to vote on this in the end of the meeting.
I will open it up to council. I mean, it would have, I mean, right now, I would say that we do have a motion on the floor.
Mr. President, point of order. To the city attorney, can you motion for an agenda item to be rearranged? Or is that more of just a formality amongst the council?
You're saying, can you motion to have the item moved to a different part of the agenda?
Right now.
That essentially is a motion to table?
With all due respect, I, just with everybody here probably wanting to speak on the item, I would rather perceive.
There's a motion on the floor, so we have to discuss.
Yeah, we do.
It needs a second.
So it would be.
We can do that. I have a point of order on the floor right now. Can you do that? How does that work?
I mean, that is a motion to table.
Right.
So traditionally, we table it to another meeting. What you're saying is we can rearrange in the agenda.
You can table it and call it from the table at the same meeting.
Okay.
So that would be, if you have the point of order, then we have the current motion.
To table, right?
So we do have an approving? Or nothing? Do we have a motion?
We should need a second.
Okay, so there we go. So the motion on the table is to table it.
I'll support it.
Take a discussion. The floor is yours.
Personally, you know, as I noted in the study meeting, I would like to send this to committee. I think, you know, car washes come across a lot. I think there's conversation and concerns about, you know, our city's capacity to absorb all of the new car washes. I know that this car wash has also offered a site update, which I think is a considerate one. But I think there are some more site.
Listen.
I, I, I'm just saying all this to say, I'd like to offer a substitute motion to send this to committee of the whole.
I'll support the substitute.
The floor is now, so we do have a motion now. We have a substitute motion that has to be voted on. So the floor is, are you good with that? Are you, are you finished?
Yes, I will finish.
Councilman Donovan?
I'm good to substitute. So I'd like to.
All right. So just how everybody knows how this works, there's a substitute motion that we're going to have to take a vote on. I'm going to open up the council. Counsel, do you have any questions on the substitute vote?
No.
I can go to the audience. Now, this is just to have a substitute. We're voting on the substitute to send it to committee of the whole. Whether that goes or not will then determine. So.
Excuse me.
I don't see anybody. Yes.
We might want to tell the audience what committee of the whole is, those who don't know us.
Yes. Yes. So right now, it's just a vote to see if the substitute will carry for discussion.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, will you please take the substitute vote?
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Schill?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the substitute motion is now on the floor. Would you like to explain further?
Yes. To the point of, you know, this is just another big topic. It's another big topic that has a lot of resident interest. It, you know, I think has a lot of community interest as a whole. And I'd like to dive deeper into it. I think that doing it in a dedicated meeting setting would be most productive. And so that's why I recommend it to be at the committee of the whole.
All right. Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. There, regular meetings, the quorum is for regular meetings, you're not supposed to ask a whole lot of questions. Regular meetings, you're supposed to, you've studied the item as a study meeting, you get to the regular, you take a vote, and you move forward. You move through business at a fast pace. So there's still questions. I still have questions for this petition. I am supportive of the petition personally, but there's still questions. I know I've spoken to some of my colleagues that also have some questions. So I believe, you know, council member wants to go to committee and discuss it further. I'm okay with discussing it further. So I look forward to a potential committee of the whole for this petition. Thank you, Mr. President.
So right now, just to let the audience know, the motion on the floor right now is to put this into committee of a whole, which is the committee of all of council. This is something that we would obviously see where to get scheduled if it does get approved. Counsel, is there any more comments or communication?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think, you know, this meeting's gone way too long. I mean, no offense. It's not your fault. It's a lot of hot topics here tonight. But we really need to keep it moving along. And I think to Kerry's point, we need to call for a vote. And let's rock and roll this thing. Okay?
I can go to the audience. Audience, this is public communication. If you'd like to speak on the item to go to committee of a whole, you can make your way up. If not, I'm going to go to the clerk for a vote. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote to send this item to committee of a whole?
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Schill?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries five to two. And this will be at committee of a whole. So just to let everybody know that is in the audience for this item, watch the agendas. This is something that we're going to be looking to probably put in committee of whole fairly soon. And it's, everything's going to be on our council website. So follow the website and check the minutes. Again, looking to do something probably in the next few weeks. So that would be more, depending on the capacity, it could be here, could be upstairs. And it's designed so we could talk a little bit more in detail about a specific item. All right, moving on. Number seven is a waiver petition comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2025-08-02-16 submitted by May Breeze Spa requesting waiver use approval to operate a massage establishment at 34722 Plymouth Road. Counsel?
So move.
Support.
Counsel, any comments, questions? Anything from the audience on this particular item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Schill?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries seven to zero. You guys are good to go. Thank you. Item number eight is a request to consider the adoption of an ordinance. This comes to us from the Plymouth Road Development Authority in reference to amend district boundaries of the downtown district of the Plymouth Road Development Authority pursuant to Act 57 of the Public Acts of Michigan of 2018. We did have a public hearing that was held September 29, 2025. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to refer this item to law, with the exception of the taxable parcel. So I'd.
Well, just, let's see, does he have support?
Support.
There you go. Mr. President, thank you, sir. I was pausing for that. Thank you. So at the public hearing, we're amending ordinances. When you do that, you have to go to a public hearing first. And the city has pushed forth the PRDA, which we've always had. We've always had the PRDA. But this time, we were amending, we were proposing to amend the boundaries. And after a lot of good conversation back and forth with the, at the public hearing, which is what they're meant for, we've determined, I think, through council, that we will not include the proposed taxable parcels. And we will keep the boundaries as they've been for 20 years, Mr. Toramina, I believe. If you could, the chair?
If I may, Mr. Chair. So the boundaries will still require amendment. There will be parcels removed that have residential properties. So the effect of the amendment to the district will be the removal of all of those residential parcels and the addition of no other commercial parcels.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Toramina, our planning director. And I'd like to refer that item to the Law Department. Thanks, Mr. President.
Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Schill?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And item eight carries seven to zero. Moving on to item nine is a request to consider the adoption of an ordinance. This comes to us again from the Plymouth Road Development Authority to amend the development plan and termination and adoption of a new tax increment finance plan pursuant to Act 57 of the Public Acts of Michigan of 2018. A public hearing was again held on September 29, 2025. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd also like to refer this item to law for the preparation of the proposed ordinance to amend the development plan and to terminate the PRD tax increment finance plan and adopt a new tax incrementing finance plan.
Support.
And, Mr. President?
That was too close to call?
Yeah. Similarly, with item eight, we're just changing around the taxable structure of these existing properties that are already paying, that are already paying this PRDA assessment will know no difference. It's the same thing. They're just restructuring at a high level of finances that are complicated, that are really smart people in the assessment department and the treasures department are doing. And this will be good for the PRDA.
Thank you. Counselman Toy?
Thank you. If I may, to the city attorney. Carter, do we have, if this is amended, this ordinance, will there be any authority? I thought there was already authority to the authority. Am I, am I correct on that? Or are we relinquishing our power or our oversight as a city to this particular authority?
So, no, the Plymouth Road Development Authority is a tax increment financing authority that has the authority to capture certain specified tax revenues per the ordinance.
Correct.
And then to provide for improvements along that corridor. So the, this change in the ordinance will not change their authority or empower them with any additional powers that they don't already have, or remove such powers. It's about the baseline taxable values of the properties and the authority. So it won't change their ability to do anything that they're already doing, or take any powers from the city.
Sure. And this will, would this be the mechanism that will increase that district by 2%? Am I correct on that? Or no?
This will change the baseline taxable values for the properties currently in the district.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few little questions there.
Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? And this, just for clarification, that this is, will come back, this would still, if you'd like to speak on it, I'm going to answer, I'm going to, and this is just more of an information question, is this would still have to come back for a first read and a second read roll call?
Correct. This is, this is just for us to continue the process drafting at the direction of council and working with outside councils.
So just to educate the public out there, this is just referring a matter. There's still a huge amount of steps that would have to come into play. There'd be a first read. There'd be a roll call vote. So we're talking multiple meetings. So just FYI. Yes.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I'll note, I know there's been some conversation with the PRDA. They're complex taxable discussions. We've been, the PRDA has existed for a long time. And I know at the public hearing, there was a lot of discussion primarily focused on the expansion of the PRDA. But again, that's why the public hearing exists. We talked about that. And we're not expanding that. We're actually removing some of the residential properties. So the PRDA does what it does to beautify that corridor, those corners along Plymouth and Farmington, Plymouth and Airman, Plymouth and Middle Belt, et cetera. So again, the commercial properties in that district, they've been doing this for over 20 years and continue to do it. But because of the state law and some of the laws that were changed, it limited the city's capability of capturing certain amount of taxes when they pay their property taxes already. So there is no difference, other than we're essentially cleaning up administrative language on our end to be compliant with the state and make sure that the PRDA can continue to exist and pay its bills and enhance those things. But I will say to Councilman Toy's position, I wish that we had some more control along those corners, which I've been frustrated with recently, with the temporary placement of signage, where we're seeing, you know, 1-800 paint signs and political signs and all sorts of stuff that for the longest time, we never saw those placed in those corners. I'm hoping that the administration can look into that. I know there's some complexities of freedom of speech and those things. And we're not, at least my intention is to not govern speech as it is to what those signs are, rather just prohibiting any signage placed in these beautified corners to make it nice. That's the whole idea here with the PRDA is to make it look nice and beautify these corners when people drive up and down Plymouth Road and businesses. So, thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel? I'm going to go to the audience. Name, address, two minutes.
Joe Schaefer, 29552 Linda Street. I'm not for or against this. I don't have any, I just want clarification on something that Mr. Fisher had said.
Could just direct right to me. Yeah, no, you're good. You're good.
So it was stated that if this ordinance passed, there is to be a reassessment of property value. So that's kind of like my question about where that would affect, did that affect the integrity of the city, just these location, what the beautification would happen? I want to know, like, what is the qualification for this assessment? Yeah.
If you're, if you're good to answer that, if not?
So the assessed values would be only within the PRDA, within the district as mapped. And as Um, and, and as Counselman Donovan noted, there is a little bit of cleanup required around that as well. Um, the, the state statute that initially enabled the PRDA has actually changed. So it's under a new act. We do need to change, uh, do some housekeeping things surrounding that language as well. So, um, most of the things that we are doing are housekeeping, but they are all related exclusively to things within the district.
Cool. I appreciate that. Oh, he's gone. I assume that that was good. All right. Um, name and address, two minutes.
Cindy Fleming, Woodring, Livonia. Um, in preparation of tonight's meeting, after reading the prior PRDA thirty-four pa, approximately thirty-four, thirty-six pages, I can't remember, um, about these proposals, I, I read the original PRDA plan. And one of the things that I came across today is that I, again, would, through the chair, refer to law to maybe answer this. But it says maximum indebtedness and duration of the plan. The maximum amount of bonded indebtedness to be incurred under this plan is thirty million dollars. The plan shall terminate at the end of the PRDA's fiscal year on November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. I thought that was possibly a revelation that the PRDA was only created for those thirty years. And I was wondering if that was what I read. And also in the original, uh, boundaries, it was mentioned at the prior meeting that the boundaries were to be expanded to include the Alfred Noble Library Building or former Alfred Noble Library Building, the Sheldon Park, and the former fire station, now the housing. But the actual map of the original plan includes all of those. So I don't know why, what the intent was behind that type of discussion. Because it already wasn't there. But was this a strategic move? Because also in that thirty-four page packet, it described that the PRDA would gain control of those public, city-owned properties.
Hey, good timing. Uh, with that, Mr. Fisher, if you can answer it, great. If not, we can probably table and get some answers. If that's okay.
Sure. So, so I can certainly answer parts of it. Um, a- as to the map and the, the PRDA plan, uh, the map does currently include the Noble site and the, um, and the park. Uh, and in fact, PRDA is actively involved in the project to improve Sheldon Park. Um, they're, they're, they're helping with the bonds there. So, um, that, that's, that is already included in the plan. In terms of whether the PRDA will somehow take over city properties or parcels, no, that's not part of the plan, and that's, that, that will not happen. Um, in terms of the end date of the plan, I, I do need to do a little bit more review on that. But I believe that the plan is actually made so that it can be extended, uh, at various periods. So, but I, I will do a little bit more due diligence on that.
I appreciate you. Thank you. Um, all right. Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And item nine carries seven to zero. We're going to move on to item ten is a request to authorize an additional expenditure. This comes to us from the Department of Civil Service in an amount of five thousand dollars above the not-to-exceed amount of thirty thousand dollars to Emco to continue to provide assessment center services for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-five from budgeted funds. Counsel?
So moved.
Support. Um, counsel, any questions, concerns, comments? Audience, two minutes, if you'd like to speak. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
No. Uh, the item carries six to one. Um, we're going to move on to item eleven is a request for authorization for an additional expenditure. Comes to us from the Department of Civil Service in a not-to-exceed amount of thirty-five thousand dollars to Emco for the promotional testing of police lieutenant, police sergeant, senior fire captain, and additional testing for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-six from budgeted funds. Counsel?
So moved.
Support.
Comments, concerns, questions? Audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
No. And the motion carries six to one. We will move on to new business. Uh, this comes, this is number twelve. It's a request to authorize an additional expenditure. Comes to us from the Engineering Division in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to remove trip hazards for the two thousand twenty-five sidewalk repair program uh, to precision concrete cutting from budgeted funds. Counsel?
So moved.
Support.
Any comments, concerns, questions? Audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. Item carries seven to zero. We're going to move on to item thirteen is an acceptance of grant easement. Comes to us from the Department of Law in reference to secured without monetary consideration from Livonia Builders G Two LLC for a twenty-foot wide sanitary sewer easement in connection with a sanitary sewer constructed on the parcel at two zero six five zero Meadow Brook Lane. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Offer an approving?
Support.
Go ahead.
All right, any, yes?
Yeah, just for the sake of the audience, if, if you want to understand more about this. Basically, the, this builder has built three homes in this neighborhood that were not there before. And they are giving us, uh, a portion of their land for the, for the sewer underneath. So it's called an easement. It's that twenty feet in front of your house. So it's a fairly standard process where the city says, we want this land. So if we have to come through there later on and fix the sewers and those sorts of things. So these next, these three items will be exactly just that. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else from counsel? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries seven to zero. Uh, item fourteen is an acceptance of grant easement. Uh, comes to us again from the Department of Law. Uh, again, these are just three different addresses, but I'm going to read it all just because I love to read stuff. So... Uh, read it. Security without monetary consideration from Livonia Builders G Two LLC for a twenty-foot wide sanitary sewer easement in connection with a sanitary sewer constructed on the parcel at two zero six three zero, uh, Meadowview Lane. Counsel?
So moved.
Support.
Any other comments? Audience? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. Item fourteen passes seven to zero. Moving on to item fifteen is another acceptance of grant easement. Comes to us again from the Department of Law, secured without monetary consideration from Livonia Builders G Two LLC for a twenty-foot wide sanitary sewer easement in connection with a sanitary sewer constructed on the parcel at two zero six one zero Meadowview Lane. Counsel?
So moved.
Support.
Just pick, you guys can kind of pick from a bunch there. Um, any comments? Audience? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero. Um, believe it or not, uh, that concludes the, uh, the last item. Yes?
So I would like to bring up, um, a motion, I would like to offer a motion to rescind the resolution denying the site planned offered under petition two thousand twenty-five zero eight zero eight zero seven, which was passed at the regular meeting of October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Support.
The floor is yours, if you'd like to...
So this is to rescind the motion that approved the denial of the Sheets property at Eight Mile and Newburgh. And that's why I'm bringing it up for tonight, so that, um, I'd like to offer the motion to have that rescinded.
All right. So we do have a motion on the table. I'm going to open up the counsel. Uh, Mr. Fisher, since, you know, you learn something new every day, um, this, so i- if I get this right, this would be to rescind the motion that carried the last meeting. And depending on how the vote goes, would then potentially open it up to a different motion. Am I correct? Correct. Yes. Okay. Um, I'm going to open up the counsel, and then I'm going to go to the audience. Counsel? Audience? So it's name and address, and is this, would this be two minutes? Two minutes.
Greg Ruckel, Gulf Ridge Villa. Um, what happened the other night at the city council meeting was kind of made a mockery of this whole voting process. Councilwoman Scheel had voted, um, to not allow, um, or to go against the, to not, or the approval. Or she added to the approval, um, her, she changed her vote so that she could approve and go four to two in favor of, uh, of the motion that she's now asking to have rescinded. And she only did that, and she made it very, very, um, obvious. She asked Carter, "I'm against this," because she already voted against it, "but I want to vote for it so that I can make a mockery of this whole voting process and bring this up again at a subsequent meeting." It, it was in bad faith that she made that vote. And, um, and I think it really truly made a mockery of this whole process. And, and I, I, it was shameful to see, to see it unfold the way it is. We only had a, a quorum of six there, and so the vote was deadlocked three to three, so the motion did not pass. And, um, and I would ask that the counsel, um, retain that, uh, motion, um, you know, that locked three to three, and to deny this motion, um, that, that was just, uh, tabled here or just to put forth. Because like I said, it was in bad faith, and she showed her hand. She showed what she tried to do. Um, she was ready to, uh, get it back on the table so that she could vote despite the fact that she was in the minority, um, before. And so I, I asked you to, um, to do that. And, and not the least of which, and we talked plenty about it, the ZBA dropped the ball here. They, they didn't give proper public notice, and they didn't even, they didn't clear the four conditions that they had to have in order to have the power to grant a use variance that they put forth.
Thank you. Name and address, two minutes.
Jim Bigga, Lancashire, Livonia, Michigan. "Mr. President, this is a mockery to the citizens of Livonia. This is a joke. This has been voted on and discussed. The plaintiff, uh, the people who, behind Sheets, come back to the city and go through the whole process again. As has been shown on Facebook, the distance across Newburgh Road is thirty-two and a half feet. Not a hundred, not a hundred and twenty. Why would we go through this again and make sure that the audience is gone? People aren't available to have this and go through a discussion? This is a mockery to the residents of Livonia, the ninety-three thousand people. Why are we doing this? Why are we making a mockery to the citizens of Livonia? Why are spitting in the face of the residents? If you are going to go ahead with this, you are just telling everybody, 'Hey, we don't care what you think. We're going to do what we want at the end of a meeting when nobody's here. We can't face you when the room's full. We don't like you. We're going to play our games because we're ashamed. We're afraid of you. We think we're better than you. Oh, I'm leaving after three meetings, so I can do this kind of stuff. I don't have to come back in January to face the music. Wait, make Sheets come back and face the music. Don't do this. Don't insult us."
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Nick Lamaco, Deer Creek Estates. Uh, just, just for a point, uh, a motion to rescind without prior notice requires a two-thirds vote, uh, tonight. So if you take that. Uh, if you had noticed prior notice, then it would require just a majority vote. Uh, regarding to my points tonight, I'd just like to point out that the citizen lawsuit is still active. Uh, we don't believe that the site plan should be approved, uh, because this lawsuit is pending. The two reasons that I'd like to talk about tonight, that it wasn't properly noticed, as it should have been. As you know, the zoning board of appeals is a quasi-judicial board. Process is important. They ignored their own process. The other point I'd like to make is that they never proved that an unnecessary hardship existed to grant the use variance. That's required by law. Simply stated, the applicant did not prove that the current zoning ordinance, zoning does not permit an economically viable use being established on the property. So again, uh, I would encourage you not to support the motion to rescind tonight, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Denny Berenson. I'm representing the Deer Creek Homeowners Association. And I'm speaking to the item that, uh, was just brought up. The fact that, uh, the zoning board of appeals mishandled what they were doing. It's a polite way of saying, maybe they did worse than that. If you approve the motion that's in front of you, then you are embellishing, or at least allowing, the ZBA to stand on their misdeeds. So I'm encouraging you, from the point of view of the neighbors, to reject this motion that's in front of you. As you've heard before, we petitioned the neighbors of the three closest subdivisions to the corner that we're talking about for the Sheets proposal. Those are Deer Creek, Gulf Ridge, Villa, and Willow Woods. Ninety-five percent of these residents said that they did not want a gas station on this corner. This alone should have failed the ZBA's vote. However, I'm going to list a few more, anyway. We don't need another gas station. That's been pointed out before. It would be a dramatic change to this corner, extending that land surface. An eighteen-foot retaining wall will look like a fortification. It won't be beautiful. We don't want a twenty-four-seven operation at this corner. This is a bedroom community. Remember, I'm representing the neighbors. None of us neighbors ever will be there after nine PM, who will be there in the middle of the night. Crime will be there. We presently don't have crime there. We're concerned that a gas station so close to the creek will, uh, could contaminate that creek. The corner of the city is supposed to be low intensity and complementary to the green areas that surround it. This is the main reason.
That's time, sir.
I'll stop. You get the point.
Good evening. Name and address in two minutes.
Good evening. Debbie McGermit, Livonia. Um, I'm here, I've listened to a lot of the reasons, and I'm not going to go through all of what they said. I would just like to say to those of you that are voting, um, over twenty years ago, my mentor, there's probably only two of you here that will remember her, um, was Val Van Der Slut. She was a two-term council member, well-respected in the city. She was a city clerk. And what she told me when I started out as a planning commissioner was, as a friend, she said, "I will never tell you how to vote, but I want you to remember one thing. This is a city of residents, not a city of big business." That meant to me, to keep that foremost in my mind, it's not that we don't want big business. We need business. We need them for many reasons. But we don't consider them first. We consider them after. We think of the residents. So that's what I'm asking you to do with this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Jerry Karasinski, nineteen-four eighty-eight Bainbridge Avenue. Uh, I just want to commend you for your parliamentary stunt. I'm, I'm very disappointed that that actually happened. Uh, but cunning is, is to be honored. So from that standpoint, I do think that, uh, earlier in this session, we talked a lot about Livonia's small businesses. Sheets is not a small business. And as a matter of fact, for that property, there were other interested parties for that owner, um, that he could have chosen or to, to work with. So please keep that in mind when you make your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Joseph Rosner, Gulf Ridge Villa Homes, Livonia. I think that what just happened is absolutely shameful, even though it may technically be allowed. This should not be approved. I've been up here, I've lost count how many times I've been up here speaking before this August body. And, um, this is just, this is shameful. So please reject this.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Pat Rockaway, Livonia. Uh, just, you got to know that the, the optics of this, while within the parameters of, you know, regulations is allowed, just the optics of waiting until the room clears out to make a motion on a... a motion on a contentious subject that's, that's been commented on over and over again, it just, that's kind of disrespectful for the folks in Livonia to wait until the room's empty to do this. You gotta know that the optics aren't optimal there. So just consider that in your voting, please.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Laura Steemaker, Gulf Ridge Villa. I was going to talk to you again about the Friends of the Rouge, but I'm extremely disappointed in a council member this evening and I'm just going to speak from the heart and I'm just going to make it pretty brief here. We all know that the, the risks that are taken by having this development put at this site, we, I've talked over and over about the Friends of the Rouge and the, the tox, toxicity of the water and, but I'm just going to tell you, I'm just going to say one thing. My mother taught me a long time ago, she said, "If you can put your head down on a soft pillow at night, you're a good person." And I can't say the same thing about a council member here tonight. Because if that, a, a clear conscience is, is, is the softest pillow. This analogy suggests that if a person has lived a morally upright and had life and has no hidden guilt or misdeeds, they can rest peacefully and sleep soundly without their conscience troubling them. Let your conscience, conscience be your guide. I believe that this is really appropriate for here this evening and I'm thoroughly feel disrespected and I'm sorry, but shameful. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Deb Christensen, just like fuming, sitting in my seat, so I just need to like come get some of it off me. I'm thoroughly irritated. I, I cannot believe the political maneuvering that's happening today, right now. It is BS. Can I say bullshit? Yeah, I'm going to. Because why not? I could say worse, right? She's just going to gavel me, who cares, right? I don't see anybody, there's, please, she can come, take me away, whatever. Okay, what's happening today is just, yeah, where are the people? You're doing, it's, it's shameful, it's shameful, it's cowardice and it's just uncalled for. And frankly, this, this, Livonia belongs to us. It's our Livonia, not Sheets' Livonia. It's our Livonia. And I want to, I want to remind you folks that have another term coming, we are going to remember your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Patty Regia, Livonia. I find it interesting that the one person, the one council member that is, was not elected by the people is not representing the people. So I'd like to just kind of make that comment. We do not need another, another twenty-four-seven gas station in the area. You've heard that this is not a bedroom community. Sheets, I'm, I'm sorry, Speedway is already there. They serve, I'll call it the need, right? But if we had to go somewhere in the middle of the night, Speedway is already there. Sheets says that they're going to fill a great need and demand. There isn't a great need and demand in the middle of the night and as I just mentioned, Speedway is already there. We do not need this, we do not want this. I encourage you all to represent the people that put you in office. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Rhonda Regio. I live in the city of Livonia. And I'm really saddened because again, when she rescinded the vote, she wasn't speaking for the people, she was elected by you. She wasn't voted in by the people of the city of Livonia. So she shouldn't have a say in it at all, as far as I'm concerned, okay? You voted it down twice, voted down again. We don't need a gas station here twenty-four-seven on that corner at Newburgh and Eight Mile Road. So think twice, because there's a lot of people in here for next election. We know who you are. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Denise Mica, great city of Livonia. Obviously, I can't go to the restroom and leave the meeting and something else happens. And maybe some of you saw my video on measuring the width of the road. I went from one guard rail to be on the sidewalk, which would have been the other easement because I couldn't climb over the giant guard rail. It was only eighty-two feet, which was within a hundred feet of Greenmead. Why? We went down and we looked at it because we said, "You know what? We're going to look at that site too. We don't want it there, but let's just see about that." And when Greg had mentioned eighteen feet, it's a cliff, oh yeah, somebody could really hurt themselves. And you look at that creek, it's running. It goes all the way around and down through Livonia. And people say, "Oh, we don't want change, we're old." No, we look at the details of things. We look at the impact of things. And this just doesn't make sense. Put a business there, but not a gas station. You could put that gas station someplace else in Livonia, but we've already said, Cosco's going to have like a million pumps over there. It doesn't make sense. I just drove that corner today. It was really hard to turn and everybody's turning, turning, turning. It's very busy. And people on the internet have said, "Oh, that, that can handle it." Nobody's done a real study of the traffic there. It's just a shame bringing this up, not listening to the people. And you wonder why some people have a louder voice and you think we're one-hit wonder? We are not. We're watching you, everything.
That's time, thank you. Good evening. Name and address, you got two minutes.
Thank you. Joe Schaefer, two-nine-five-five-two, Linda Street. First, I want to thank councilman-elect Brockway for saying what he did, because I agree. The parliamentary measure is kind of, looks pretty bad, knowing that it was voted on twice before and was turned down. And then the, you know, zoning made a variance specifically for this place. It doesn't look good. And to that point, that's the second time today that I think some didn't look good because moving something, I, I mean, I know council, councilwoman Toy said that we've been here a long time, but the people who showed up to talk about a, a car wash, they were here a long time too and now they got to come back. So you're wasting your residents' time by making, like just moving things around to fit your own agendas. It's not, it's not really respectful to your residents and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. So with that, I'm going to go back to council. Yes.
So, Mr. Fisher, I just wanted to come to you. Could you explain what, how many votes this needs to pass tonight?
Correct. So notice was provided by council, the councilmember Sheil to the colleagues that she wanted to bring this motion to rescind. Therefore, it only requires a simple majority for passage.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If I may, I would like to pass the gavel just to at least speak on this, if I may. Yeah. Yes, if I may, thank you. Yeah, I'm kind of at a loss of words, you know? You come in here and we had our, our due process and it felt very long with the meeting, almost purposely, that, I, I don't know, you know? I feel terrible, guys. I mean, this is, this is kind of the, the sucky part. Am I allowed to say sucky? It's fine. This is, but honestly, guys, when you see stuff like this, like y'all said, you just remember it, all right? I mean, honestly, we're elected by the people and I do find that this is very intriguing to see how this process has gone, so. You know, this, this is, this is one of seven here, guys, so that's all I've got. Sorry.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President.
Mr. Donovan.
Thanks, Madam Vice President. I know there's, like, there was a comment from a resident that says about wasting the residents' time. This is the normal course for, for projects, for, for committees and those sorts of things. When council wants to discuss items further, you can go to committee and there's study structures and that's just the normal course of action at any city council, any municipality. Naturally, this is, this is an interesting situation. Selfishly, it'd be, it'd be easier for me to punt this to the next council. I, I wouldn't have to deal with it. It'd be easy for, for me politically speaking, but knowing what I know, the, the reality of the circumstances is, is yeah, I voted no against original rezoning for Sheets a year ago, but the petitioner has a legal right to go appeal it, the zoning board of appeals. They exist for that exact purpose, not by necessary city charter, but by state statute in the zoning enabling. The ZBA's exist for that reason and they can go to the ZBA and the city council doesn't have purview over the ZBA and their decision-making body, only the circuit court judge does. You may disagree with that decision that the ZBA did, but I'm not in a position to say that they were wrong or right. If you want to challenge that decision amongst a circuit court, you can do that and go through the normal process that you would go through any legal proceedings. As a council member, I have a job to do. My opinion is when the site plan was denied at the last meeting, or failed at the last meeting, it wasn't denied for actual legal reasons. It was denied because people don't want it. I understand not wanting something. I don't want a gas station at that corner. I don't want a big corporate company there. I want small businesses. But that's a moral decision, that's not a legal decision that's going to stand up in court. So you may not agree with it, you may make noises, but at the end of the day, it's the reality. And I've sat on this council where we've been challenged by petitioners because we did an action just like this because the residents didn't want it, understandably so, and we went to court and of course, there was a consent judgment and the city was wrong. And they're going to build their structure either way. So again, easily, you know, we talk about optics and those sorts of things. I understand that. I wish more residents were here. I know it's a long night, these meetings go long. If you go to any of these meetings, the meetings are here. So you may not like the decision and, and one way or another, in my opinion, as one member, a get, the Sheets' gas station is going there. We've already been on the record, you, you can say it's not going to happen and I, and that'd be nice if it wasn't going to happen. But the reality is, in, in two years' time, the next city council, if we punt this down the road, the next city council will deal with this. They'll go into closed session, the city attorney and our planning staff and all the city officials will say, "Yes, you violated their rights." The judge is going to approve this plan and they're going to control the site plan. And then, worst-case scenario, they levy a consent judgment against you, which is a monetary figure, which the city is not insured for. So the city will spend tax dollars on that. So you can say no, you can disagree with that and that's your right. And, and in part, I wish that was true, but I have a job to do and I'm not making jobs for political reasons, which is the easy, easy thing to do for politics. You get threatened for your future elections and I understand that, but my job is to do, to follow the law and, and fast forward two years from now, unfortunately, a Sheets' gas station will be there regardless of this council making the decision or the next council. So I will be support of the rescinding motion. I don't know if the votes are there. And I'm speaking out loud publicly so the residents know where I'm at. I couldn't speak at the last meeting because I was, I was chairing that meeting, so I want to be transparent with my rationale. I did record a fourteen-minute-long video on my social media page trying to explain my position so that at least the residents know about it. And I want it to be on the record this evening as well, so that the residents know about where I'm coming from at least. And if you've got any questions, feel free to reach out, reach out to me and, and you know, I'll do my best to have a conversation with you. Thanks, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Counsel? Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Budzinski?
No.
Councilmember Sheil?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
No.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
No.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye. Motion carries four-three.
Mr. President? Okay, I pass you back, please.
Mr. President?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to offer a motion to approve Sheets, and I'll read this out loud, so it becomes part of the, so that having considered a communication...
Hey, guys. Guys, I'm sorry, just we have to maintain...
Resolve that having considered a communication from the City Planning Commission dated September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, which transmits its resolution zero-nine-dash-three-nine-dash-two-zero-two-five adopted on September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, with regard to petition number two-zero-two-five-zero-eight-zero-eight-zero-seven submitted by Skilken Gold on behalf of Sheets requesting site plan approval pursuant to ZBA appeal case number two-thousand-twenty-five-zero-three-zero-four, approved on May sixth, two thousand twenty-five to construct a gasoline service station, limited service carryout restaurant, including a convenience window at the southeast corner of Newburgh Road and Eight Mile Road in the northwest quarter of section five. The council does hereby concur in the recommendation of the Planning Commission and petition two-zero-two-five-zero-eight-zero-eight-zero-seven is hereby approved and granted subject to the following conditions, and they are the conditions that are listed on the original approving motion.
Do, do we have support for that?
Support.
Point of order?
Yes.
Carter, is that acceptable, how I did that?
Yes.
Thank you.
The floor is yours still, if you wish.
I'm set. Thank you.
Counsel?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, you know, part of this problem is because I was not at the last council meeting and I, I take ownership in that. I want to thank my colleagues. This is a tough situation and I want to thank them for the opportunity to participate in discussion regarding Sheets. I think it's only fair that we have a full council when we talk about this tonight. Unfortunately, two weeks ago, my husband had to have emergency surgery, which is why I was not at that meeting. It was the very first council meeting I've ever missed in my two years of being elected. Small shout-out to Trinity Hospital for taking care of him and he's going to be fine. We are lucky to live in a community where we have access to great medical care, so thank you for that. And Mr. Donovan kind of already said some of the things I was thinking, but our role today is to consider the site plan presented to us from the Planning Commission, which included a recommendation for approval. It is not our function to revisit the zoning board of appeals. I was a member of the zoning board of appeals for years before I was a member of this council and they are the designated appellate body for such matters. Our applicant here, Sheets, has complied with numerous concessions requested by both the Planning Commission and the council. My vote today is going to be based on two key criteria, whether the proposed site plan adheres to the zoning requirements for this location and if Sheets has fulfilled the conditions outlined in the plan. My personal preference, nor my opinions or nor the opinions and emotions of many residents who have engaged on both sides of this issue, which to me has been almost a fifty-fifty split, I have heard from so many people who were upset about how the meeting went down a couple of weeks ago. And while I consider everyone's thoughts, I've read every email, I've listened to every voicemail, this cannot be the only relevant factor to the decision. We can't just stomp our feet and say, "I don't want it." We have to look at the legalities here. To deny this plan without due cause would expose the council and the city to the risk of costly litigation, a position I am not prepared to support tonight. My decision will be guided by facts and legal requirements, not emotion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else from council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm going to speak on this. I didn't necessarily get an opportunity to speak on, on my vote at the last meeting. I spoke a lot about, you know, that it was a site plan, a lot of the things that my colleagues have just explained, because they're not wrong. They really aren't. And my choice and how I'm voting on this is, is quite frankly, very personal and, and could arguably, you know, be, be designated as, as selfish. Because the reason I voted against Sheets consistently is, you know, because my motivation for, for running for office is, you know, based on creating a better planet for my boys, or at least the best that I can do as a mom and, and I can do here where we live here in Livonia. So I have environmental concerns. I, you know, it's not, I'm not anti-business, I'm not anti-Sheets, I'm not anti-gas station. For me, I just have concerns about this location and, you know, I don't think it makes it better. And, and because I don't feel that it's making something better, I can't bring myself to approve this site plan. But I, I do want to be clear that I, I don't think that it does change the end result. You know, the, the realities of how lawsuits go through, I, I do, as I said at the previous meeting, believe that a gas station happens either way. I personally can't bring myself to vote in support of that. And, and I just want to be very upfront and frank about, about that reality. You know, I'm, I'm doing this because of moral reasons, not because it's what the... You know, I'm doing this because of moral reasons, not because it's what the site plan says. It is, you know, not easy being in elected office. You have to make a lot of hard choices. You make a lot of sacrifices. And for me, I am using this vote to make a personal statement about my values and what I feel about the environment. And I just want to be clear and share that with the residents, so thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Madonovic.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks to my colleagues for their remarks. I will be in support of the site plan. Again, originally, I voted no against the rezoning way back when, which was determining the zoning usage of this property, and that was settled by the zoning board of appeals. So now the council, our legal job, our obligation, is to oversee the site plan, and they adhere to all of our zoning standards and our ordinances. You heard that at the last meeting from our planning director and from our city attorney. So the city council still denied the site plan. Fine, I understand that. But I know, again, what I know, and I believe that if the site plan is denied, even though the petitioner met all of the regulations, all of the ordinances, alls they're going to do is sue the city, and they are ultimately going to get their gas station and their project. The difference is, is that a circuit court judge will determine the project as opposed to the city council. So again, I released a long video talking about my opinions on that. And again, it would be easy for the next city council to deal with this. And if this is denied, they're going to deal with it, and then they're going to have to make that tough decision. But at that point, there'll be serious consequences to that. And not only, again, will a circuit court judge, in my opinion, inevitably approve this site plan, but that could potentially risk the tax dollars that come along with that that are not insured, because our insurance provider essentially would say that the city voluntarily put themselves in the situation, so they are not covered, and we would have to pay that out of our general fund. And then that city council is going to have to make very tough legal decisions on what they are going to cut in the city and what services are no longer to be funded. So I'm going to do my job, albeit it's tough, albeit I don't enjoy this whatsoever, but it's my job to make these difficult decisions that have legitimate concerns outside of this room. Regardless of someone's personal opinions on a particular issue, there are legal bodies out there that will do what maybe this body wouldn't necessarily want to do. And again, that would have real-life implications on our residents and our general fund, and it will impact... I mean, we're going to start, we have to cut things. You've got to go to Parks and Rec. You have to go to police, fire department, senior services, and every department will be asked to be cutting. And I just know because I've seen this happen before, and the city's set of lawsuits, and it's not fun to see tax dollars be wasted on litigious things that could have been avoided. So it's a tough decision, but again, I want to be on the record so the residents at least know where I'm at on a particular issue. And I appreciate your time. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the most important things, or the most important thing we do as council, is to manage the city's finances. We have to be the fiscal stewards for the city. And emotions aside, sometimes we have to take a very difficult vote. This is a very hard vote, but you have to step aside from your own emotions and what you personally may want. And what we are trying to do here is to protect the city's assets. I know that there's going to be some disagreement with me. I get that. Half the people will agree, half the people will disagree, and you have to be able to remove yourself from that and make the best decision for the city that you can. And that's the situation that we find ourselves in. Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm sorry. I know we do have some of our newly-elected council member elects out there, and this is a lesson. Sometimes we have to take hard votes, and it is very difficult when you have to be put in this position, but you have to do the right thing for the city, and being the fiscal stewards is the right thing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. If I may, I'm going to pass the gavel just to make some comments.
Okay.
Point it back.
Take it again.
May I have the floor?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so, guys, you know, before I was kind of at a loss of words, I've kind of wrote down some notes. Bear with me. I sit here and I look and I go, "Why do we have a city council?"
Mr. McCullough has the floor. Can we please let him have the floor? Out of respect for Mr. McCullough, please.
I look at things and I go, "We have a law department that's in-house. It's an in-house law department." And I've seen this, and I think this sends the worst message out there. That basically tells every developer and corporation, "Hey, just sue us." And so, listen, I think this is a lesson. My biggest thing, listen, I didn't mind this site. There's been a lot of rumors, and I want to knock this. This has been going on for almost over a couple years now, right? When this was first presented, I looked at it and go, "You know what? It's not terrible. There's another location at Seven and Middle Belt. They were going to be looking at the Sears property." And that's when Five and Newburgh was happening. And I will tell you, it was intriguing, but when you start pulling back the onion and you realize that there's ordinances in place that say 100 feet from public land... So what I'm looking at right now is, I want to ensure that all those golf course holes don't have any people on it, because you know what? If we're going to hold ourselves to a standard... I've been on this council voting in favor using against projects for that same reason, for that same reason. So you know what? Maybe Division 21 needs to be cleaned up, and maybe that is something that I'm looking at our council members that are incoming and saying, "Let's do, roll up the sleeves and do the work." Because right now, we represent the people. And listen, I don't want to get sued, but at the same sense, we have an ordinance that says 100 feet. Now, you can have, you know, a differentiating thing, maybe with green made with lot lines, but the fact of the matter is Whispering Willow shares a lot line. And so what are we talking about? Are we talking about the clubhouse? Are we talking about the hole? Listen, it goes by property lines. That's how it always has. That's means of construction. So that right there is a big issue. And you know what? We have a great law team, and we should fight it. But, guys, this is democracy, unfortunately, and some good and some bad. Again, swear this is a chip. Thank you.
Mr. Donovanick?
Thanks, Madam Vice President. Question to the law department. I know there was conversation about the 24-hour component. Do we believe that we could limit their hours of operation with Speedway being down the street from them being 24 hours?
I don't believe that, under the site plan review ordinances that are currently in place, that we have the authority without their consent to limit their hours of operation.
And I ask that question because, you know, we just heard, you know, "Fight it." And I understand that, "Fight it." But there are attorneys that will also fight it, and I have a ton of confidence in our law department. But when it's black and white, that the petitioners, whether I like it or not, whether the petitioners' constitutional rights were violated throughout the site plan process, there are attorneys that will go back and forth and fight this. And I just find it very bold to just say, "Fight it." Because again, there's real-world consequences when you just fight it. And if I thought we were in a good legal standing at the rezoning time, when I originally voted down the rezoning at the time of usage, when you're determining if the usage is appropriate, that would be a time to fight it, and the city council denied it. And then again, they went through their appellate process that is a route that they legally have under the law. We don't have the authority to just take away their constitution-protected rights to appeal a decision, and then we don't have the authority to tell the zoning board of appeals that their appellate decision was wrong. So again, just to say, "Go fight it," it's just a very bold statement to make when you know the consequences, but you know that there's other people on the council that will do their legal job to make sure that the city is not placed in that situation. And it's not a fun decision to make, but, you know, we know that people on the board will do, enough of them will do what they got to do. And I do hate that precedent. Of course, I hate that precedent, but we didn't establish this precedent. This is a precedent that's been established many, many decades ago, when similar councils in other cities have challenged an issue and with the petitioner. So we're not setting a precedent here. We're just following the law. And again, it's unfortunate we're in this situation, but we are where we are, and it is what it is. Thanks, Mr. President.
Madam Chair. Counselwoman Toy?
Thank you very much. I'm going to call for the question. I think we've been over this over and over again, and I appreciate all the comments from the audience, my colleagues. I differ with, and they know that.
Counselwoman Toy, is that a motion to call the question? Because that needs to be a motion.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Do we have support?
We have support.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
You're... No, audience, no. Go ahead, Counselwoman Toy.
So what I'm, now I'm telling, no, I'm confused. No, I'm teasing. No, I mean, we've been over this. I'm sorry for whatever is happening or not happening, but we've been over this over and over, everyone, and it's time to make a decision. So let's move on. I really believe that. I mean, after a while, this is called a regular meeting. This is where we're supposed to be voting. I know something new came across the meeting, and everything can come from the floor. We follow Robert's Rules of Order. It's a parliamentary kind of thing that we have to adhere to as elected officials. It keeps us in order sometimes. Sometimes it doesn't. But if you know anything about it, and our attorney has agreed, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Carter, and I don't want to bring you into this, except that this is a regular meeting. This is where we vote. And the reason I stated that earlier in the evening about having to leave is because there's people here that we're supposed to be on at 8 o'clock, and that's not fair to them either. So I'd like to move on. Thank you.
Well, so we have a motion before us to call the question?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Do we need to go to the audience, Mr. Parliamentary?
We have to go to the audience to call the vote.
Excuse me, I'm trying to hear what he's saying.
So we have to take the vote on the call question.
Yes.
You have to have a two-thirds majority vote to call the question.
End discussion.
Right.
To end council discussion.
Correct.
And then we'll go to the audience.
Correct. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Who has the gavel? President McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye. Motion carries. Now we can go to the audience for communication.
On the motion.
On the motion, yeah.
Motion.
On the motion.
My point of order, James Bigga, Lake Shore Road, Livonia. At the beginning of the minutes approval process, it was read that Sheets had agreed to remove the stand-up window, the call-up window, drive-up window, whatever it's called. And at the start of this motion, when it was added in by Councilwoman Scheel, is that proper and improper?
Are you all set?
Question is, since Sheets authored or agreed to remove it, should it then be asked to Sheets to put it back in instead of the city saying, "We're adding it back in"? That's all I'm saying.
So, Mr. Carter, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here. I believe what Councilmember Scheel offered was a brand-new motion, not a replication of motions from the last meeting. But you take it from here.
And that's my understanding as well, that that was not a renewal of the original motion to approve, but a new motion, including an additional pickup window, but not a drive-through. So this is based on the petition made by Sheets originally, is my understanding. So it is a proper motion. Sheets does not have to come back and offer that.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg Ralco-Golfridge. You know, this is the zoning board's opening statement, and it says, "If any of these conditions cannot be met by the petitioner, the board has no power to grant a variance." Have you read the minutes from that meeting? They were disgraceful. They were disgraceful. That decision was made before we even got there. Get the smirk off your face. But that was made, that decision was made before we even got there. They didn't want to listen to us, and they already had the thing written up, okay? Carter's dad, unfortunately, was there, but he wasn't there for that meeting. And I hate to say that, but they did a petition, okay? They did a public notice. They did a public notice that said "gas station," and they gave them a gas station, a convenience store, and a drive-through restaurant. A drive-through restaurant is also prohibited in a C1 zone, okay? And it all happened in front of everybody, and it was mind-boggling, okay? So we have a lawsuit with Wayne County Circuit Court, okay? They didn't give proper notice. And we didn't give an opportunity to defend or speak on our terms. You're doing such a noble thing by avoiding a lawsuit from the city. You're saving us from a lawsuit. That, listen, you're willing to go along with all of the things that were broken. This is what was broken, and not take a stand and going to just bow down to a potential lawsuit? If they file a lawsuit, you think anyone's ever going to patronize Sheets? It's a PR disaster. It's publicly toxic to do it. They're not a developer where they hide behind the development. No, they're going to be out front and center. So we're going to save us from a lawsuit. You're such a noble gesture. You're being blackmailed, and you're being blackmailed to support the law that was broken and the confidence in the city, the residents, that was broken.
Sir, that's time.
That's the reality.
Denise Micah, great city of Livonia. ZBA needs to be totally reviewed. I mean, this is crazy. You're already in one lawsuit with these homeowners. Why didn't you hold this and stay it out until you find out what that is? But no, you want to go ahead, and it's going to be follow the money. We're going to be playing that game a long time. So I love how Councilmember Donovanick gives the brief for all the attorneys to use on Facebook on how to sue Livonia and anybody else. You're wondering where you're going to get your money? Well, last year, you had a tight budget, and you found $2.6 million to be spent on the Civic Center out of the $8 million that you approved that you didn't realize that you were approving, $8 million. So there is money there. Or take money away from people having cars with unlimited gas, pulling up that city employees that get cars. They can just go in and gas up anytime, right? I mean, there is a lot of places for money. Or let the civic group, the, oh, I forget what their name is, but the hiring people? How do we need to spend all that money to do that? You can tighten the belt. And where is the common sense here? Common sense is, we already got one lawsuit. Tell them, "Sorry, we got to put a hold on this," because we have one lawsuit already. But you're going to say, "Well, no, we'll just approve it and give it to them." No. This is so sad. And yeah, leave it up to the next people. I hope they are, and I trust, we worked really hard to get some of these people elected so that they would stand up instead of just going, "Oh, we're going to have a lawsuit." And I measured that, and even with the golf course, it's 82 feet.
Thank you. That's time.
I'm embarrassed.
Good evening.
Good evening, Eileen McDowell. Well, to everyone's point about the lawsuit against the ZBA, and I think they should be more concerned about not complying with the actual rules of the ZBA in order to qualify to give this variance. But I have some questions, and if anyone knows, and maybe somebody will answer. So who's the broker behind that Sheets deal and for representing the property owner? Because I've never seen anything posted or any kind of signs outside that building. And I think that's somewhat concerning. And also, I know text messages are foible between people that are on government positions. So I was just curious, number one, if all you guys know that. And, you know, just a suggestion, because these meetings go so long, I think going forward, maybe the next council can look at separating back the way it was years ago, where regular and study meetings were separated on different nights, because I think this is kind of crazy to be here till midnight. So anyway, please listen to the people. You know what? We need to take a stand, and we need to take a stand now. Because bowing down to every, you know, business that has a lot of money and not going through and actually looking at, our rights are being violated. Our rights as citizens are being violated because we do not have people supporting us, for one thing, but those are parklands. Those are our public lands adjacent to this property. And, you know, they're ours. They're ours, not yours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Fleming, Livonia. I'm just gonna add something and reiterate what a lot of people have already said. But let's stop a minute and look at who appoints the ZBA. I have spoken to several of you personally, because you did. If your ZBA appointment, pointee, moved this through improperly, I am calling for you to take their appointment away and reappoint a person with integrity, who is here for the benefit of the people of the city. It is time that you hold them accountable for us. In addition, Greenmead is less than 100 feet. I don't care. People are human, and people make mistakes. But it's time to stop and take account for what has happened. Whispering Willows is immediately adjacent. Stop what you are doing and think before you act, because we are asking you to act on the behalf of Livonia citizens, and future citizens.
I'm begging you to reject this. I'm begging you. But on the other hand, if our lawsuit is successful, we're gonna be right back here again. Because it's gonna, it's gonna overturn the ZBA, and we're gonna start all over again with the new city council. So we're gonna be here anyway. Please, reject this. This is nonsense. Thank you.
Joe Schaefer, 29552 Linda Street. Well, first I wanna say, I didn't appreciate the condescension from Councilman Donavich. So, um, and to my point about fighting it. So, my understanding is that while the ZBA is generally considered final, aggrieved parties, in this case, the city of Livonia, because of weeping willows, has the ability to take this to circuit court to fight the decision of the ZBA. So the idea that you have to vote in favor of this because you will be sued is a lie. You could just appeal it. You could appeal it to the circuit court. And I mean, the idea that this is final is absurd. And you can, I, I beg you to ask, Mr. Fisher, if my statement is correct. Thank you.
Apparently, many of you are not getting the message about the toxicity of the water that it runs directly behind the 8 Mile and Newburgh Corner. I've spoken up here about the, you've had the documents from the 2025 spring bug hunt data report, and I'll go over it again. Those streams that run through Whispering Willow, Fox Creek, idle wild golf courses, and all through bicentennial rotary parks are part of what is called the Bell Branch. This encompasses the stream that I just spoke about, right at that corner. The Bell Branch doesn't rate very well. I mentioned earlier about the, the quality index was rated fair, the water quality rating was rated fair to poor, and the chloride rating was rated toxic. The Friends of the Rouge is extremely concerned about opening a, a gas station so close to the streams that lead all through the city of Livonia, then through the main Rouge River. Fuel spills, tank failures, storm runoffs will travel the stream that just steps away. Nothing can prevent that from happening. Water runs downhill and seeks its own level. I cannot believe, taking everything else out of the equation, the zoning board, we have to look at the environmental issues. This is serious, this is serious, folks. I mean, we're, we're talking about, I, I don't know how I can say it anymore. I, I'm, I'm at a loss for words. I'm thoroughly disgusted with what's happening tonight and the backhandedness that, that took place this evening, although we were ready for you. But I will tell you one thing. Eagle can say all they want about this being okay, but common sense says you should never, ever build a gas station on the banks of a critical watershed. Common sense must prevail here. You must make the right decision and say no.
Patty Reggio, Livonia. This is very shady, very underhanded. We wonder why we don't trust our, our politicians, the people we elected in place. It's unfortunate. It's very, very shady and underhanded. We waited till the end of the meeting to bring this up. Most of my residents have left, because they thought it would come up at the, at the first audience participation, but she waited till the very end to bring it up. On the other, on the note about the, the river and the, the water and the gas station, Sheets couldn't even present or explain what the heck they were gonna do with the snow. That's water, that's runoff. What are we doing? They couldn't even talk to that. What are we gonna do with all the, the gasoline that spills from the people that just happen to be pumping gas, drips here and there? I know they talked about, you know, two or three filter filtrations, but what about when they push snow, and it goes over that, that retaining wall and into the, into the river? I think that the, the hypothetical situation of a lawsuit is hypothetical, it's a scare tactic, and I don't, I don't support it, but you do have a lawsuit that is in front of us right now, from the residents. So, I am encouraging you to continue to vote no, and, and think this through.
Thank you.
Hi again, Deb Christensen. Boy, I'm tired. Vice President Tashnik, you had commented earlier that you wanted to be a part of the conversation. I was at that meeting, many of us were, a couple weeks back, and you will not get the scope of what happened at that meeting right now. Not one, not one person besides the Sheets Corporation came up here to these microphones in favor of Sheets, not one. Now, there might be people out there that want Sheets, people that want a, you know, fast meal or whatever. You know what? But we're here, we're concerned about our neighborhoods, we're concerned about the watershed, we're concerned about property value, we're concerned about our parks next door. And I don't even live on that side of Livonia, but I'm here in support of my neighbors. This is just unbelievable. I, I can't even believe what I'm witnessing tonight, and, and the shady, underhanded, backdoor kind of things that we know happened in order for this to take place, this fancy maneuvering today? I, I'm, I'm beyond words, I'm just, I, I can't even like, I can't even believe that you're all human, honestly. It's really, it's really disgusting to me. So I urge you, I beg you, vote no. Vote no, vote no, vote no. Like we said, Martha, at the last time, we're not afraid of a lawsuit. I don't want you to be either. We're here to support your decision of no.
My name's Rod, Rod Reggio. Live in Livonia, Willow Woods. That area is a flood zone, okay? A 100-year flood zone. We've had it for a long time. And what I want to say is that Sheets gas stations, they've had leaks in every state. They've had leaks, they had multiple leaks, they had tanks that leaked, they had gas coming out of the cars, onto the, onto the pavement, and then in the wintertime, when the snow removal is, they're boxed in, okay? Where, who's gonna put, what are they gonna do with that snow? Are they gonna put it over that retaining wall? Are they gonna haul it off in a big truck? What are they gonna do? That's what we want to know. That's what you should know. But nobody's talked about it yet. So I'm asking you to vote it down, and if you don't vote it down, what you should do is wait until the next crew gets in here before you make a vote. Don't vote at all, wait till the next crew gets in here that's got some backbone. Thank you.
I've been before you a number of times, and I hope you realize that my whole position has been of supporting a process that is transparent. And I don't believe that we've been following a transparent process at all. I believe that the Zoning Board of Appeals made a false decision based on false standards that the site plan was never ripe for your consideration to begin with as a result of that. And as a result, citizens have to now go to court to prove their case that they acted improperly. You, as a council, could have held the ZBA accountable. It's not unreasonable, and it's happened in the past, where a council will sue their own boards to enforce their own rules and decisions. But you decided not to do that, or even questioned whether or not the ZBA followed their own rules. Now, let's suppose the ZBA did follow the right rules and came to the decision that they wanted to support the use variance. I would, I would've been comfortable with that, because they can impose conditions on that use approval, to make sure that site is used in a socially and economically desirable way. Noise, environmental conditions, hours of operations, drive-through or not, we could have attached those conditions and solidified that to support a lot of concerns of citizens. We did not even have that opportunity to do that as part of the process. And now tonight, I hear from your attorney that, that the rescind vote didn't require two-thirds, that adequate notice was given. I challenge him to, to prove that point. Robert's Rules of Order does not say that. You have to give notice if you want to have a simple majority. That's notice to affected parties. The affected parties have to have a right to come and challenge your decision when you reach a, a vote on a rescinding. We didn't even have that opportunity tonight. So again, I encourage you to join us now in the lawsuit against the ZBA.
Thank you.
Jerry Karasinski, 19488 Bainbridge. I live near Seven and Merriman. I don't live near where the proposed Sheets will be. I am like the other people here. I would love the Sheets, but I don't want it there for various, obviously documented reasons. The numbers have been put down on the paper. Everybody has spoken. They don't add up. And Martha, you're a numbers person. It does not make sense. And to the questions that people had about snow removal, those snow guys get paid to get the lot cleaned quickly. So they're gonna push it over the wall, they're gonna push it wherever they have to push it, and then they're gonna drop calcium chloride, or they're gonna drop salt. And that salt is gonna go with runoff, because as we discussed at the last meeting, even though they have a three-step filtration process, it's not gonna have the capacity to either handle that much salt and snow, and it's not gonna have that capacity if we get thunderstorms and fast amount, large amounts of rain. And I think Councilman Budzinski recognized that. And I appreciate that. And so, again, I work on your petition that you make a decision on honor, and listen to the residents, and hook us up with the people that support this. And when we say support, again, we support Sheets being in Livonia, but they can't be in a bad location. Because we'll put them out of business, because we'll make sure that we don't go there. They're gonna create all kinds of traffic problems, especially in the morning, because people are gonna turn left to go in there. And then they're gonna have to try to turn left to go out to get to the freeway. If there's no possibility, or if they go out, they can go south on New, Newburgh, they're gonna cause trouble for people leaving the golf course in the afternoon when they get gasoline. It doesn't make sense. And when we get to the point where it doesn't make sense, we should vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. We've called the question. We've got the motion on the floor. So it's time to vote. Madam Clerk.
No, one moment.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
What are we voting on? The call into the question?
No, we already-
Are we voting on the actual motion?
We already voted on the call to the question.
So we're voting on the motion itself?
The actual motion itself.
Okay.
Yes. Is everyone clear on what we're voting on? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Budzinski?
No.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
No.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
President McCullough?
No.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye. Motion carries 4-3. Mr. President? I'm gonna make the call again.
All right. So that does conclude. I'm gonna go back to the audience for items that are not on the agenda. If you've already spoken, unfortunately, you're gonna have to wait to the study. Seeing none, I'm gonna go back to council.
Motion do.
I think we can safely show everybody in here. Everybody, listen, it's been a long night. I'm gonna, we're gonna restart, we're gonna do the, the study at 10:00.